Well, good evening everyone. We will officially call to order this Mayville City Council meeting, the workshop at 5:00 p.m.
Well, good evening everyone. We will officially call to order this Mayville City Council meeting, the workshop at 5:00 p.m.
I know some of us are having computer issues, so we'll let IT work on that as we head into executive session.
I know some of us are having computer issues, so we'll let IT work on that as we head into executive session.
So I just want to read out our mission statement. We'll do this at the beginning of every meeting.
So I just want to read out our mission statement. We'll do this at the beginning of every meeting.
"The city of Mayville is a safe and responsible community embracing the values of our past, present, and future citizens."
"The city of Mayville is a safe and responsible community embracing the values of our past, present, and future citizens."
We now have an executive session to enter into and Mr. Dave will have you join us there.
We now have an executive session to enter into and Mr. Dave will have you join us there.
And I'm going to read it out. It's, "City council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551.072,
And I'm going to read it out. It's, "City council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551.072,
deliberation regarding real property to discuss the following: deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property."
deliberation regarding real property to discuss the following: deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property."
And we will head into executive session right at five o'clock.
And we will head into executive session right at five o'clock.
We convene from executive session at 5:27 PM. We have three minutes left in this workshop, so we'll just go ahead and take that as a break. And then here at 5:30, we will kick off the ceremonial oaths for Councilman Bonner and Councilman Land. So give us a few minutes here to get things prepped and then we'll begin. All right, is this everyone for you here, Mr. Keith?
This is it.
All right, this is it. Have the room. So I expect you guys to all stay afterwards for the entire council meeting. It's going to be a riveting, a riveting meeting tonight. So Keith, congratulations on your election. I know that you and your family and friends worked hard. If you can please raise your right hand, I'm going to have you repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Keith Bonner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the city council.
Of the city council.
Place one.
Place one.
Of the city of Manville.
Of the city of Manville.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of this city.
Of this city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So what we'll do now is we'll have Councilman Bonner say a few words and then you guys can all take a big group photo together. So, Councilman?
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to support me tonight and everybody that's supported me in the city election. As I spoke to everybody and anybody that knows me, I'm an open book. So anytime that anybody has a question, call me, let's talk. I'm not going to hide behind anything. I'll try and give you an answer. If I don't have one, I'm going to tell you that right away. But I'm going to find an answer. So I appreciate the support. Again, I look forward to serving with the rest of the council members for the next three years so that we can make Manville a place that everybody loves to call home. Thank you.
Are we good?
Yes, gentlemen in the back, yes, perfect. All right, everybody look here. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on. Can't escape. Yeah, you got one more, one more photo.
One more? Congratulations.
How are you doing, sir? Good to see you. Yeah, you want to head up that way? No, I got you here. Yeah, leave those there. Yes, you gotta, you gotta come up here, Carla. You can't escape. All right. So next we have the swearing in of Councilman David Landz for his reelection. Councilman Landz, congratulations. If you'll please raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I, David Landz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the city council place two.
Of the city council place two.
Of the city of Manville.
Of the city of Manville.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And the ordinances of this city.
And the ordinances of this city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, buddy.
Well, first of all, I just thank my lovely wife for supporting me through all this reelection campaign. And there's still a lot of work that we want to do as a city, I want to do as a councilman. This past year has been a fantastic year. We've, we've done a lot of good. And we're making a mark on the city and the path forward. And I'm excited about continuing for the next three years. I appreciate all those that came out and voted for me and supported me through the election. And I'm excited about what's coming ahead and working together with the mayor and the council and the city manager and all the other to move this place forward. Thank you so much.
All right, next, I'm still going to call you councilman. If we can have Councilman Larry Acre come forward here. So Councilman Acre, we have a little gift for you here and also cupcakes that I believe Ms. Mary Ann Atkinson.
I heard you get a free truck.
Yeah, free, yeah, free little honka truck for you with the city of Manville logo. So I first met Councilman Acre back in 2017 when I moved to the city. And then when I began to serve with him on council in 2019, I would come up to city hall to meet with staff and meet with our city manager. And I was like, man, this guy's up here all the time. I think he, I think he lived up here for quite a few, quite a few years. But I've learned to appreciate not just your, your perspective, but also your commitment and your passion to the community that you've called home for so many years. You've left an undeniable, undeniable mark on this, on this city. And we are a better place because of you. And so I want to give you an opportunity to say a few words here. Well, then I believe you have some family with you. Come up and take a photo. And then we'll eat some, eat some of those cupcakes. All right?
Okay. Well, I want to thank the voters that did vote for me. I appreciate it. It's like David said, and the staff who I've known for a long time. And, and I'm not really going anywhere. I'll be around one way or the other. So my daughter is here and my youngest granddaughter showed up. So you have, you have to come up here eventually to get a picture. But anyway, appreciate the plaque. And yeah, I have been here a long time, 47 years. So I've enjoyed it, believe me. So anyway, that's about it. I don't know. I can, I mean, I don't want to get off into a lot of talking stories. Huh? Drainage. Oh yeah, we need drainage. But let me tell you something. I've seen some things. I've seen some stuff over the years in the way of floods. Claudette sticks in my mind. It's a minimal tropical storm. Don't worry about it. Yeah, 43 inches in Alvin in 24 hours. That was the worst thing. Still in the world Guinness Book of Records. So it was, it came into San Luis Pass and stopped. And that was it. And rained and rained and rained. But that's not the last one. We got a big drainage project that we're working on. Robbie's working on it. We, it's going to be finished product to be a nice big recreation area, we hope. Anyway, so I don't know. That's it. I mean, I, you don't want to hear all these stories. I could tell forever. No, you don't. So you see, council, they're used to me. But anyway, and then I got the staff over here. You know, I got accused of never talking. And the reason for that is I used to meet with the city manager once a week, especially on agenda night, every morning. And we'd go over everything. So when I'd get up here, I'd just listen to the rest of these people and see what I can learn. But that's the reason I didn't ask, because I already heard everything that probably anybody's going to say. Anyway, so Bobby, how's it going? I just did on purpose. So anyway, so I guess that's it. But I am going to get on a task force, I hope. And so I'll be around and around. Mary Ann made the cupcakes, by the way. So if it wasn't for her, we wouldn't have anything. You know, so enjoy them.
So if it's, if it's, if it's good, it's Mary Ann. If it's bad, it's Donald, is what we'll say. So if you guys ever have any questions for Larry, once Whataburger opens, you'll be able to find him there. So if, yeah, if your daughter and granddaughter would like to come forward here, you're going to come up and take a photo. And then we'll have a little bit of a recess to enjoy the cupcakes and the sandwiches. And then we'll step into the meeting at, at 6:00 PM. You want the microphone? You can. She's like, nope. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. We'll take about a 15, 20 minute recess. So please enjoy the cupcakes, the food, the drink, the coffee. If you guys want to take photos with anybody, please take photos. And we appreciate you being here. being here. We will officially call to order this regular session of Manville City Council on May 20th here at 6:00 PM. We have seven of seven members present. And we are gonna start with the invocation. And for the invocation, we have Pastor Hayes tonight of Crossing Point Christian Church. And Pastor, if you could please come forward and I know you have a few words for us here and then lead us in a prayer. Thank you for, for being here.
I bring greetings from Crossing Point Christian Church. I am Craig Hayes, Senior Pastor, where our theme is to love big through generosity and service. Thank you, Mayor Davis, City Council women and men. As we prepare to have an opening prayer, I want to remind us of what the scripture says. There are three divine institutions, government, church, and the family. It is clear in Romans 13 that the government are divine workers, servants of God, devoting themselves to that orderly work, along with the church and the building of the people and the family. It is a symbiotic relationship that we have, the church and the government and the family. And so let us pray this night. Heavenly Father, we come before you. You are creative of all things. We seek your guidance and your blessing this day for wisdom for our leaders and the community stakeholders, for community health, for community peace, for every agency, both present and in the future. Help this council lead with compassion and kindness and empathy, maintaining order with patience. This is our petition. And it is in Jesus' name we pray this prayer by faith. And everybody who can agree with that, can you say amen? Amen, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. And this pastor, this past weekend, if you could stay up here for a second. There it is. You guys, you guys had a 6K racing and fun run. I believe you mentioned to me that you guys are gonna be doing that again this fall. And can you share that, about that with us a little bit?
Thank you so much, Mayor Davis. We did have a 6K, was it fun walk, run? And it was to promote health. We had a mega health fair with about 15 to 20 vendors, health fair, food trucks. And the run was to bring resources to the local elementaries and middle schools for the PTOs. As churches, we want to be present, but we understand that they have a mission, just like yourselves. And so our job is to help the momentum. And so as I was sharing with the mayor, the PTOs are on the ground doing yeoman's work. And so we want to provide extra resources for each one of them and back the mission that they have with the local leadership in schools. And so that's part of our plan. And so we're trying to execute that in excellence. So thank you for allowing me to share that.
Yeah, we appreciate that. If you want to, whenever you guys have it scheduled, send it to our city secretary. Maybe I can get myself and Councilman Oplager out there to, to run it together. So we'll see. He ran the Houston Marathon.
I'll hold you too. But we're, we're so privileged to be here because we're right around the corner off of 288 minutes away from here. So again, I thank each and every one of you and congratulations to those who are new on the panel, on the council. Amen.
All right, thank you, Pastor.
Thanks so much, Mayor.
Next, we have the inspirational reading and we have Councilmember Sarmiento that has the reading tonight.
Thank you. There's a problem. My phone crashed. So I'll have to improv it.
What do you got for us?
Well, last time I spoke about Proverbs 31 being one of my favorite scriptures in the Bible. And Proverbs 31 calls women to be leaders out in the, in their communities and in their homes. And it calls us to be businesswomen and to be good businesswomen. And so without having to go through and read the entire chapter, because it's a lengthy one, I ask you to go read that and if, and be challenged if you're a woman in leadership, and males, because there's a lot of wisdom in there. But really and truly, it talks about waking up before the sun, being the first to serve your family, but also servant leadership and serving our communities and being smart with our resources and being an asset to our husbands. And, and as a woman that sits here, that's one of the prayers that I have. And I hope that we all, as council, can, can strive to be what Proverbs 31 says. Just change it. You know, nowadays, everything in the Bible is men, so we can just change it to, the women part, change it to men and just take that on. So I can't read it tonight because my phone crashed and I can't, it's currently downloading. So, but y'all can do that, Proverbs 31, and, and that's really what my inspirational reading tonight was.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If you guys will please stand with me and join in saying the pledges. First, to the U.S. flag, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. So we have one proclamation tonight, a proclamation for Flood Awareness Week. I know Larry, you'll appreciate this one. So I'm going to go ahead and read this off. It says, "Whereas throughout our state's history flooding has threatened Texans' safety, property, and economy, from the Great Galveston Storm of 1900 to modern-day storms like Hurricane Harvey in 2017, it is imperative that Texans unite to prepare for sudden and violent acts of Mother Nature. And whereas flash flooding is the number-one cause of weather-related damage, and sadly, Texas often leads the nation in flood-related deaths, many of which are preventable. And whereas, thankfully, the Lone Star State is home to the most resilient, caring, and hardworking people in the world, together, we have weathered hardships with exceptional courage and with the can-do Texas spirit that has helped us lift each other up in times of turmoil. However, there is always more that can be done to improve how we prepare for, respond to, and keep our families safe from flooding. And whereas dangerous floods occur more frequently during spring and summer, thunderstorms and hurricane season, intense rainfall or slow-moving storms can cause rapid water rise and flash floods in minutes. Texans should be flood-aware, know if they live in a flood plain, and where to find reliable weather updates. Taking personal responsibility is crucial in hazardous weather, following safety guidelines like the Turn Around, Don't Drown Campaign. Just half a foot of fast-moving water can knock an adult off of their feet, and two feet can carry away large vehicles. And whereas in Texas, organizations and communities conduct a flood awareness campaign annually during a week in May, this campaign is dedicated to ensuring Texans are better prepared for flooding by providing citizens with educational materials, as well as encouraging Texans to wear blue, as organizations like the Texas Flood Plane Management Association do, and to enhance the visibility of this campaign. And whereas Texans are encouraged to educate themselves and their families for flood safety and flood awareness, by being aware of and prepared for flooding, we can create a safer future for the Lone Star State. Now, therefore, I, Dan Davis, Mayor of the City of Manville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 20th through the 24th, 2024, to be Flood Awareness Week in the City of Manville, Brazoria County, Texas." And next, we will move on to public comments. We have, I believe, Tammy, just two that you've put here for public comments. So the first one that we have here is Melissa Charba. Melissa, if you can please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. My name's Melissa Charba. I live on 6506 Jordan. I've been here for 17 years. When our family moved here, I have two sons, Hayden and Kyle Trask, both graduated from Manville High School. Fortunately, Hayden's a chemical engineer and Kyle plays in the EFL. I've worked the past 25 years in human resources at MD Anderson Cancer Center. I'm here to speak to you today in regards to the Clark Bridge relocation project. I live on Jordan Road, right where the canal, right against the canal. So instead of turning, the Jordan Road's going to go straight over the canal. And so part of that project, the tree line that's in front of me have large established trees, and they're slated to be cut down as part of this project. I bought my property from Clinton Booth, and the property has a barbed wire fence and fence post within the tree line. And I'm not sure the rationale why the property line isn't where that barbed wire fence is, but it's back. And so the trees are all slated to go down. They were actually there, and I stopped them. And I said, I'm supposed to talk to Tech dot. The guy is coming to talk to me. And so he said, you can try to fight this, but someone's tried to fight the county before, and they weren't successful. So I told him, we're City of Manville. And so I just wanted to ask for support. It's my understanding, there's an initiative for Save the Trees in the City of Manville. And there's also, the telephone pole is amongst the trees. I did speak to Almeda Waterwell today because my pump house is relatively close to my fence, and there's two red posts as part of, you know, the other ones are green, two are red. And he said, that is flagging something. But when I brought it up to Tech dot, they're like, oh, it's with the electrical pole. It's not lined up. It's lined up with my pump house. And Almeda Waterwell said their well goes straight down. So also, I want to get that checked out. Tech dot also said they're going to, I asked about the ditch and drainage, that they're going to have the ditch flow towards my fence line. My main mission, though, is save the trees. So I didn't know, am I able to leave pictures with you of the trees? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. If you want to give those, if you want to give those to Tammy, what she'll be able to do is distribute it to all of us afterwards.
So that's it. I'm just asking for help for the trees.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate it. We'll make sure to have someone from staff follow up with you as well. Yes, ma'am. Melissa, your address is 6506 Jordan Road?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I originally bought 6524 and then from the booths, and then they downsized. And so then, once they downsized again, I bought 6506.
Awesome. Well, thank you for being here, Melissa. Next, we have Katie Smith. Katie, if you can come forward and just give us your name and address and three minutes, and you have some exciting things to tell us about. Thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Katie Smith. I'm the Library Branch Manager for the Manville Public Library. I've seen many of you before. I came before y'all, well, I'm at the Manville Public Library. I actually live in Iowa Colony, but I'm here representing the Manville Public Library at 25114B Highway 6. I'm here to talk about our summer reading initiative. As you know, every year, public libraries across the country, in order to keep kids up to date with schooling and make sure that they don't lose what they gain in school in terms of reading and education, we have programs with prizes and just different programs are available for the kids to come in and do. And it's usually really fun. Our library's been growing significantly over the last couple of years, with our summer reading peaking at about 850 kids last summer, which is actually the largest in Manville Public Library's history. I just wanted to come before y'all and let it be known that this year, we are continuing the trend. And on June 1st, at the public library in our little backyard section, we are having a summer reading kickoff party. Obviously, if any of y'all want to come, there will be free snow cones and some free schmoozing. Come Talk to Parents and People is a really good place to come because obviously, the parents bring their kids. There's going to be water slides. It's going to be a really fun experience.
Awesome. Thank you. And what are the dates for that event?
It's going to be June 1st for the summer reading kickoff party. And summer reading challenge goes from June 1st to July 31st. I actually have some flyers that I put up here on the table.
Great. Thank you so much. I know my kids love the summer reading program. We participate in it every year, and I love that you guys do that. So thank you for all that you do. I know a vague topic of conversation has been getting you guys a new building or new buildings at some point. And I know that council is looking forward to that opportunity as well.
It's going to be a fun few years. I can feel it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Appreciate it. All right. Next, we have the city manager update. Dan, we'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Charba is absolutely correct. The project has started, and that was something we were going to talk to you about tonight. Tech dot strangely did not give us a heads up that the project was going to start, but it has. And if you drive out on Jordan and Clark, you can see a huge swath that is cleared through there. And you know, when you see it on a map, it looks like one thing. And then when you see it in real life, what this new right-of-way is going to look like, taking out those two dangerous curves, it's pretty significant. So Robbie actually did, I believe, was it today Robbie visited with Ms. Charba? So we're talking to our Tech dot people as well to see what they can do, if there's any way they can, you know, they can't realign it. The right-of-way is what it is. But if there's anything that they can do to save the tree line, as it were. So we're still working with them. I'm going to follow up with an email to my counterparts, and Robbie's talking to the field folks as well. The second thing was, as you probably know, we had a pretty significant water main break here a week and a half ago. And it was significant along Highway 6. I would tell you that it was bad, but it could have been worse. And what I mean by that, just if it would have been just a year ago, when we only had one water plant, our whole city, all of our customers would have been without water. So the guys were able to manipulate valves and get things work back up and running for two of our, two of our three subdivisions that were impacted. The third one was Blue Water Lakes. That one was impacted the worst because that's very close to where the break was. But we've got plans in place, and in fact, we're very, very close. We have looped Blue Water Lakes back into the main water mains that actually come out of the back of Manville High School. So if you remember, we have a Maverick Water Plant. So there's now another loop over there. So that's, that's what we're trying very hard to not have any dead ends. And this is one of the, one of the few that are still there. So that's why Blue Water was without for longer than than others. But with that in mind, I wanted to sort of celebrate something that Brooke took care of on her own with that, because, you know, if you recall, there was, it was a hectic day and trying to, I know our guys were scrambling all over, trying to get people back up with water as quickly as possible, while not lose our water plant, while not have to go to any type of boil water notice, which they were able to do, which was absolutely amazing. I know Ray and Ernie are here, and of course Robbie. I know we're all very appreciative for how hard they worked on that. But what Brooke was, you know, trying to field calls, just like our utility billing was. And what she ended up doing was grabbing basically the CSV files from our utility billing folks and was able to upload that into our notification system. So not everybody had signed up for notifications. Well, we don't, we don't want to assume or, you know, barrage people with junk mail or junk phone calls, but this is significant, right? So she just did it. And we said, okay, if people complain about it, well, then they complain about it. But at least we'll take the initiative. So with that, I thought it'd be a good idea for Brooke to show kind of what are, I always want Everbridge, right? Everbridge, what it's capable of. If you'll humor us just for a minute, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So one of the things that I was asked to do is show y'all where on our website you can go to sign up for Manville MNS, which is our mass notification software, which we utilize Everbridge for. This is relatively new. I think it was implemented last month, I believe, and it replaced Blackboard Connect, which is our longstanding mass notification system. This one has a lot more capabilities, and we're really pleased with the move. So to sign up, you actually just go up under Residence on our webpage. Let me get this pulled up. On our website, under Residence, you'll find Manville Connect. And under Manville Connect, you'll see, this is all of the various ways that we keep people updated. We have our social media center. We have the Manville Link, which is going to be running our first edition next Friday on the 31st. It's an e-newsletter. Notify Me, which you can sign up for different updates on our website. So if we update our press releases, or if Tammy adds a council date or something like that, you can get a notification for that. Under that is Manville MNS, which is our mass notification center. Then we have live public meetings, which we're doing right now. And then our monthly management updates. The mass notification system, if you click on this, it will take you to the member portal through Everbridge, where you can sign up to receive these notifications. So the different notifications, this isn't just for, say, like events or things that we post on social media. There's a little bit of crossover, but primarily, this is for urgent and emergency situations. So there are different things you can sign up for, which would be like water interruptions, boil water notices, gas leaks, things that are urgent community news. And whenever we have those going on, we'll give you a notification either by phone, email, text message. There's also an app functionality that we're working on as well, so people can download an app and be notified that way. But it's all up to preference, and you can customize it however you want. You can sign up for whatever capabilities you're interested in, whether if you just want to know if there's a water interruption, or if you want to know any anticipated street closures, if we know that Brazoria County is coming through to pave a road, hopefully one day, that we, that we give them that information so they're aware, so that they don't, they're not caught off guard. But yeah, that's kind of, that's our mass notification system.
Thank you, Brooke. And then just two other things. Memorial Day, of course, is coming Monday, so City Hall will be closed. Public Works is closed. I guess everybody but the Police Department, huh, Chief? Sorry. And then another exciting thing, June 8th, is that right, Tammy? City Cleanup Day. Can we officially say that out loud now?
So yes, it's going to be on June the 8th. However, I don't have any of the details for it yet, other than it will be at the EC Mason Back Parking Lot. Waste Connections is still working on getting me the exact times and all the details, but we will roll that out via social media once we have all that.
That's it. Awesome. Fantastic. Well, I appreciate the update, and Brooke, appreciate your, everybody's work with that main water break. I know during campaign season especially, everyone's tired of getting junk mail, but I appreciated getting the phone call, letting me know about the water pressure, as I had signed up for the notification system. So great work to all that were involved in that. We'll now move on to the consent agenda and council. There is one item I would like for us to remove from the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to remove it, which is Agenda Item Number Four. That's the acceptance of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee Report. I want us to have some discussion about that. We also, the supporting documentation was not uploaded until late this afternoon for it. And so I want to talk about that a little bit. So I'll make a motion to remove Consent Agenda Item Number Four from the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Sarmiento. All those in favor? All those opposed? Item removed, seven zero. We now have the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have any comments or questions about said agenda? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Hudson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilman Perry. All those in favor? Our motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. We now have items removed from the Consent Agenda. So we'll do this item here first, which is Acceptance of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Report and Recommendation to Have the Impact Fee Study Updated After Four Years Instead of Five Years As Recommended by the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee With a Five-Zero Vote. Dan, can you kind of introduce this item to us and talk about the meeting that happened last week?
Sure. So as you may or may not know, the city does assess impact fees for water and sewer. And so that's for a new water or sewer service that connects directly to the city system. And part of the state local government code, if you're going to have impact fees, then you have to track those fees that come in and make sure that you're actually spending them on the projects that are identified in the impact fee study. So it's twice a year that this CIAC is supposed to meet and put together, actually, they just receive a report. We're having our consultant that did the impact fee study prepare the report as well. And then the CIAC meets and then puts forth a recommendation to y'all. So Thursday night, right before that storm came through, CIAC was meeting in here. And they had a very lively discussion, a good discussion about, they got a 101 on what impact fees are. And there was only one person that was on the original CIAC from a couple years ago, and that was Alina. Sorry, it took me for a second. And let's see, Richard, if you want to make your way up, just in case they have some specific questions. But one thing that was a little bit different on this particular discussion is they talked about the frequency of the impact fees. And so we made a point that state code, or state law requires that we update our impact fees study every five years at least. If you're going to charge impact fees, you have to keep track of it, and you have to update it at least every five years. And the question came up from one of the members was, well, do we have to wait five years? No, of course. Some cities, as Richard could talk about, do it once a year. Some do it every two years. The study is not free, so you can only do it however much the budget will allow, so to speak. But they asked, hey, well, if we know that these projects are coming in more expensive than they were originally budgeted for, case in point, a project that is on your agenda tonight, the wastewater treatment plant, when that project was identified in the impact fee study in 2021, it was going to be a $26 million project. Well, if all goes well tonight, then it's getting awarded as a $40 million project. So that's just one project that has significantly increased, like so many things have after COVID. So that was the discussion was, hey, should we go ahead and update this a little bit early? And the reason, I thought it was a valid question, at least to have some discussion going, because obviously, we're about to enter into the budget phase. And so if there's a thought that council might want to entertain that, we need to know that now and go ahead and factor that into our budget. So Richard, I probably butchered that up a little bit. You want to clean up my mess?
I guess the only thing I'd mention is the CIAC is really meant to receive the information, you know, say that they've received it and, you know, basically bless it, that the information looks good. The recommendation- it, that the information looks good. The recommendation is simply just that. It's just a recommendation. Y'all, y'all are the only body that can decide. But that's kind of their role is to review all the lanious assumptions and the costs during the study. And then afterwards, receive this every six month semi-annual report, basically seeing like, you know, did the costs come in close or, or not close? Is the growth happening? Just kind of govern the, govern the process and let y'all know every six months what their thoughts are.
Well, thank you, Dan and Richard for that update. Council, do you have any comments or questions? Councilman Lance?
So what is the, the fee, what is the charge for the, for the study?
We, we haven't asked for a proposal yet. What, what Freezer Nichols included in the study, here's interesting thing is you can include the study as one of the capital, excuse me, one of the capital improvement projects in the impact fee study. And so they had earmarked a number of $150,000 for the study update. So it's, it's significant, right? So that's why we need to know if we're going to include that in the budget or not.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments? So one question that I have, accepting this recommendation to go to four years does not mandate that we have to include it in this year's budget. It's simply just accepting that recommendation. And then we get, when we get to our budget conversation, and we're going to kick things off next month, that's when we'll discuss that further. Okay. One of the things I'd be very interested in discussing when that time comes is also for new developments, a road impact fee study, as well as a drainage impact fee study specifically for, for new developments. We understand the impact such as Lakeland, for example, the impact it had on roads such as Tankersley, Dogwood and Charlotte. So understanding that, that's not included, but that needs to be a price of doing development. Also for people that had water that previously flowed onto where the new development's occurring, that land, now that that land's being built up, the water's not flowing there. And I think that new development should be responsible for offsetting that. So I'd like to understand what it would take to study that out and to see what it would look like to have an impact fee for new development as it relates to those two areas, just to explore the feasibility. This is not for existing residents. This is not for existing properties, but this is specifically for new planned development. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, council, do we have a motion regarding this recommendation in this report?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Oplager. Do we have a second? We have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Hudson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Dan. We now have our regular agenda. Agenda Item Number One, Consideration and Possible Action on the Appointment of a Mayor Pro Tem to Serve For One Year. Counsel, as we started last year with Mayor Pro Tem, current Mayor Pro Tem Hudson, each year I will be recommending a different Mayor Pro Tem to serve in that capacity. And so going from position seven to position six, I reached out to Councilwoman Sarmiento to see if, see if she would give me the honor of serving as the Mayor Pro Tem for this year. She said she would. And so council, I would like to make a motion to appoint Councilwoman Sarmiento as our Mayor Pro Tem for this next year. We have a second, who seconded it? Second, second from Councilman Bonner. That's your first second. Congratulations. There you go. We'll get you on a main motion here soon. You're going to be the first. All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Congratulations. Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to say a few words?
Please don't die.
Well, thank you.
That's all I'm going to say.
My wife would, my wife would agree with that. My wife would agree with that. Anyways, moving on from that one.
Turned on fast.
We, we have Agenda Item Number Two, which is Consideration and Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2024-R-16. We'll give it over to Chad with his new stand to help him read.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Not quite sure how I can follow up for, please don't die, but I'll do my best. In continuation from our last council meeting, staff has presented a new personnel policy. The policy that's presented in front of you tonight is the same, with the exception of the four areas that council had requested that we make some improvements to. The first is our mission statement is now part of the personnel policy. Two, we have updated the weapons verbiage to give us more clarification on weapons. Three, we have added verbiage for paternity and maternity leave. We've added as far as maternity leave, four weeks of paid leave, and then the person is allowed to take up to 12 weeks in accordance with FMLA policy. That time period after the four weeks would fall under either sick or vacation time, but they would be protected under FMLA. As far as the paternity leave, we are allowing two weeks of paid leave. And then again, if the individual needs to take more time after that, they are protected under FMLA and can take up to the 12 weeks. We did put verbiage in there that the individuals have to be with the city for at least one year prior to. The last was we added verbiage as far as authorizing every individual in the city, if they see a safety problem, that they can do a timeout for safety regardless on if it's day one on the job, or if the city manager that's going out and seeing something. They see something that's unsafe, they call a timeout, they get supervisors, stop the job until we get that issue addressed. One thing that I failed to mention last go around was that prior to presenting this to council, we did have this verbiage looked over by our city attorney, and we also sent that to Olson and Olson. They've given our notes and looked over. Everything's good on that part. So if approved by council tonight, our game plan is to get this out to each staff member tomorrow. And then within the next week or half, we'll have each individual sign off in an acknowledgement form, and we'll go from there. Any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Chad. I appreciate that. Do we have any comments or questions from council?
I do.
Councilwoman Sarmiento?
I wasn't here two weeks ago when this was on the agenda. So thank you for tabling it so that I could just throw my little two cents in, which whatever that's counted for. But I am strongly, strongly in agreement with the changes that the mayor asked for you guys to add in paternity leave. I think that women get a lot of the benefit when that comes around, but we need dads and, and moms need their dad's support. So I don't know how many dads we have now that are going to be expecting beautiful babies, but I think that's a big step in the, in, in a direction forward, making it known that we want the city to love our citizens, but also love our internal, our internal customer, which is our employees, which, you know, we've been advocating for. And this is, last year we approved benefits and now we're doing this. And I think that this is, this says a lot about the culture and what we're doing here and, and all of us and your leadership and your leadership. And so, thank you. I love these changes. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else from council? Well, there's a few.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, Councilman Bonner?
Under the employee's safety, there was some discussion at the last meeting where I was sitting out front about, and I believe they added the stop it, stop the activity behavior. Is that where that discussion came up last time? Stop work?
Yes, sir. The question came up on the verbiage on shall the employer, does every employee have the authority to stop work? So we made clear that it was in the policy that yes, each employee has that authority. If they see something that's unsafe, they call a timeout for safety, get with the supervisor and shut the job down until everyone is on the same page.
So along those lines, so along those lines, within the department, are there other safety rules that are, that are looked at that might not show up in this book? And for instance, I'll give you, say, say Robbie's got a crew that's working on something that requires electrical. Is there an electrical lockout procedure?
So I, I will let Robbie answer this, but to kind of get to your question here. Prior to each meeting, we have toolbox meetings and we go over project meetings as far as any potential dangers, anything that we need to look out for, such as, I was in the private sector for 30 years, so I'm very well of lockout, tagout procedures. We will go over each as far as what areas need to be looked at, exactly what type of equipment, if anything is outside of our normal scope, we'll go over that with the employees, make sure they have a good understanding before we start the project. But this verbiage is there just in case, you know, if they, something comes up that's out of the ordinary that they see, they can go ahead and stop. But Robbie, you're welcome to answer.
There's just like three things that went along with, like had lockout, tagout and closed space entry, you know, things like that where, say you've got to go inside some vessel. And most of this would probably come in at like the wastewater plant or the water plant, going in a hole to fix, say, the, the water problem we had the other day. I just didn't know if there was specific procedures there that would cover those to where somebody might miss something in a meeting, but they would say, some employee might say, well, I know we've got this procedure. What about that?
Good evening, sir. Yes, sir. We do have policies in place. And as far as like lockout, tagout goes, electrical, we usually try to contract that out. So we don't have nobody that's really certified that's on board as an electrician. Yeah. So we just kind of contract that.
And that brought up my last issue was contractors. How much do we look at their safety record before they're put on? I'm assuming we have lists of contractors that have been vetted. So how much do we look at their safety record?
So, so actually we're taking a different approach to that. We're actually digging deep, diving deep on what kind of safety measures they have in place and stuff like that. So yeah, we'll be looking at that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So I have a few questions in relations to the handbook. Tammy, I know that, that you had brought up an, an item previously about the PTO accrual and how it might impact, some of the changes might impact those with longevity, working for the city. Has that been corrected within the handbook? We're good to go there?
Yes. Dan and I visited on that last week and he made those corrections and it is reflected in the updated book.
Okay, fantastic. As I was reading through this as well, you know, one of the things that I hate in policy is ambiguity. And I noticed that in regards to tattoos, we allow tattoos unless it's deemed offensive. What would we deem as an offensive tattoo? Because what might be offensive to me isn't offensive to, let's say, Councilman Perry. So what is the, what would we deem as offensive? What's the definition, the parameters around that?
Again, it's one of those tricky areas as far as what you may find offensive as for someone else. If something is blatant, such as certain verbiage, that would be considered offensive. If there are certain images, such as anti-religion, or something of demonic or what have you, or something showing violence, that could be considered offensive.
So if I had a tattoo on my arm of Jesus hanging on the cross, and I work alongside an atheist, would that be deemed as offensive because they don't believe in there being a God?
Again, sir, we would not see that as being offensive. That is something as far as individuals, as far as what they may see. Our policy is open door to where if an individual does see something that they find offensive, they can come to HR, have that conversation, and we would make that determination. But no, I would not see that as offensive.
Okay. Because the concern that I, that I would have with something like that, and it, it seems like a minor detail. I know I'm in the weeds here, but I think maybe an internal policy would be, would be helpful here as to what might be deemed offensive to not offensive. Because I could see, Chad, it would be, put you in a sticky situation regarding what you might interpret as offensive or not offensive, based off of, you know, when, if you have a policy, it's something that you can point to. You can say, this is what we define as, as offensive. So that's just something to consider that I think is a gray area that leaves it up to interpretation that could cause hurt feelings or upset feelings based off of what is or isn't deemed as offensive, based off of whoever's sitting in the seat of HR or city manager. So that is, that's one thing I noticed. I love the inclusion of the parental leave of absence. I'm glad we included that, but I don't want to see it kick off after the employee's been here for a year. I, I love that it's four weeks for the mother, two weeks for the father, and it's a full pay. But here's, here's a situation, you know, just kind of to go down this, this rabbit trail. Let's say somebody gets hired by, by the city and they've been looking for a job for a while, and then they, they go home and they celebrate with their spouse and they have a fun night and they celebrate. And all of a sudden, now they're, they're pregnant. All right. So, you know, I'm not going to get any more detail than that, but you know, nine months later, now they need to give birth. They have only up to that point, because they can only accrue 6.67 hours per month. So they've only accrued 1.5 weeks of PTO at that nine month mark. So they could then only, if it's a woman that's giving birth, that they could then only take one and a half weeks off before they would be required to come back to the job, or somebody would have to donate PTO to them. So that's the concern that I have about making that four weeks that's paid, the requirement of them reaching a year. I don't know, Chad, if you have thoughts on that, or if council has thoughts on that, but that's a real life scenario that puts somebody in a difficult situation.
Yes, sir. And to answer that question, the reason that verbiage was put in is that is verbiage straight out of the FMLA guidelines as far as for parental leave. In order for you to qualify for FMLA, you have to be at least one year with your employer to qualify. So we took that verbiage from there. Again, if the council feels differently, we can look at that because this is something that we are paying. But as far as FMLA is concerned, those guidelines do have one year.
Because, you know, council, what do you, what do you guys think? Because I mean, do we want to lose out on a very qualified employee because they might be a month or two months pregnant whenever we, whenever we hire them? Or do we say, we're not going to hire you if you plan to not get pregnant for a year, which we can't do that, but it puts us in a very difficult situation when you put that one year stipulation is, is my, my opinion. But council, I would love to get, get your thoughts on it.
You have to go down the reptile.
I mean, it's, it's, it's very, so the reason I brought this up in our last meeting is because my brother and his, his wife find themselves in this exact situation. So it's fresh, fresh of mind. Councilwoman Sarmiento, what are, what are your thoughts?
So in my experience, as a woman who was pregnant and was bed rested and didn't have insurance, didn't have anything, not a dollar to my name, after being with the company three or four years at that point, I know what it feels like. But as a businesswoman and as a consultant to many businesses, I also know that there are, it's, it's a, it's a fine balance, right? Because yes, we want to attract quality, high caliber employees with top notch benefits, but we also don't want to bring in employees that want to take advantage of the system. So I don't know that if she gets pregnant a month before or delivers a month before the 12, you know, the 12 month mark, or what if she gets pregnant, or, or his wife gets pregnant at the three month mark and delivers, you know, there's this gray area. You know, she could deliver right at 11 months. She could deliver like that, that hard line is kind of, I feel tricky. Honestly, it's tricky. It's, it's a difficult thing to say. However, FMLA has those stipulations in there to protect the businesses at all cost as well. I, I don't know. Maybe, maybe as a council, because we do value that and we do value family and life here. The first thing that I hear you say is we don't want to scare away top quality candidates. Absolutely. We want the top, the best. In order to do that, you got to supply them with the best benefits, right? But how do we articulate whether, hey, it's a free for all and you get here and three months into the job, you can take six months off? You can't do that either. So I don't know. I mean, how many of, what's the percentage of our employees that are in their fruitful years? I don't know, you know? Like how, how significant is this in this, in our employees? Out of the, out of the hundred plus employees, how many of them have given birth over the last year? How many of them have been here over a year? How many of them were not here under a year? I think looking at that data is imperative to making such a decision like that. The easiest thing, which I don't know if it's the best thing, would be a case by case, depending on maybe their quality of work. Also, we can't hire the city manager. He's in this big time executive position and two months in, he has to go and get to take four weeks off either, right? However, maybe an admin position can work from home on the telecommuting, telecommunicating, telecommuting policy that we have here. So it's a sticky situation. I don't think it's black and white. We can't say boom, you know, everybody at the mark because it would be unfair to somebody that gives birth a day before. What do you think, manager Dan?
Well, I mean, if, if we want to change that from 12 consecutive months to nine consecutive months, or six, I mean, we, we have the ability to do that. There's nothing available right now. So everybody that I know, Robbie included, that took paternity, I mean, leave, he just, you know, was out of his own pocket. So anything that we do is more than what we have right now. So that's the good news. But if we want to change that to less months, then that's totally fine.
I have another backup question to that. So if we're talking about paternity leave, but then we also want to look concurrently here with what's their PTO? How long do they have to be here to accrue vacation time? have to be here to accrue vacation time? And if they've accrued 1.6 hours, is it 1.6 hours a week, you said?
Six, it's 6.67 hours per month.
Per month, okay. So how do we balance that? If, if you've accrued so much vacation, do they have to take the vacation first before paternity leave, maternity leave kicks in, FMLA? I mean, I thought I heard somebody here that was an HR professional, you know? Maybe we can ask them, but it, it really does depend on what we want to do here.
So to answer your question, ma'am, yes. In order to take FMLA before, you have to exhaust vacation time, sick time, all of that prior to going on to FMLA.
Yeah.
Now, we normally work with the individual to see what the balance is, how long they're going to be out, if it makes more sense to use the sick time, or make more sense to use the PTO time. That way, we're not exhausting all if we don't have to.
Okay.
So we actually work with the employee on that.
Okay. So here's the other thing that employers don't really want to tell you, is that the reason that's there is because oftentimes, you know, it's to, to create loyalty and to create an employee that's been there, put the time in to accrue that benefit out, right? And so that also is where it gets sticky. Are you a salaried employer, an hourly employee? I mean, this is a huge discussion, honestly. I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are about where that line should be. I mean, it's definitely something we should all consider other than nine consecutive months. I mean, how much time do they have to put in before they get to exhaust and pull out of our pockets? Because that's also taxpayer money. This isn't a big corporation that's for profit. These are tax dollars that are taking care of our employees, and that's really what's there, is you've got to put your time in, right? I don't get a week vacation if I'm newly employed. I've got to put the time in there to earn that, that benefit.
Councilman Perry?
Just, I guess, more of a follow-up on Councilmember Sarmiento. So that consideration of one year, was that strictly trying to align it with the guidelines of FMLA? Or is there a financial impact when you talk about the salary benefits package by?
Actually, sir, it was just out of the verbiage from FMLA, and also following as long as with our personnel guideline on new hires, everyone technically is on probation for one year. And then after one year, we move from there. So that was the reasoning on, on one year.
And, but even in line with that, would there be a significant impact when we're talking about budgeting and salary and benefits package?
So I can say since, I've been here since February of '21, we've had a total of four or five births. All of those have been for employees that were with the city over one year. I think we had one employee that was within a month or two, and we worked with that employee as far as having that paternity leave time.
So what I would like to offer up, and one thing I think it's important to highlight is, it's not just the birth of a child, but also I love that it says the adoption of a child. And I think that's a very important thing, because you can be at any age in your, in your life, and you can adopt a child. And so I like that. What, what if we change the last sentence? Instead of saying the employee must have worked for the city for 12 consecutive months, we put the, the employee may have worked. Because at that point, then, it allows there to be that discretion as what, you know, I hate ambiguity, but I think this is an appropriate situation to where, what Chad just mentioned, if the employee is within that one month to two months, it allows it to be on a case-by-case scenario. Because right now, we're hard coding it in that they now do not have a say. You have to have worked for the city for 12 months in order to qualify. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. So maybe changing that must to shall, or may, should, I mean, something along those lines. Do you think that allows that a little bit of flexibility? So then it's up to the discretion ultimately of whoever needs to sign off for the approval. What are, what are the thoughts, thoughts there?
I think if we have should in there, I think that would work, right?
Yes, sir. I believe so.
We'll, we'll make that change, Mayor, if, if that's consistent with what council wants to do.
I, I just want to caution that we want to be a little careful, because when we say it's up to a case-by-case, you know, up to our discretion, you open up the opportunity for someone to say we're, hypothetically, we're showing favoritism.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just a concern.
Yeah.
So, Chad, what the, the vacation and stuff like that, so insurance, don't you have to be here a year before some of that benefits start?
Uh, no, sir. That's actually 30 days as far as the insurance.
Okay. And vacation is secured monthly, right?
It, it's secured monthly, and this policy, what we would be doing for the employee is that normally within one year, you would collect 10 days of PTO time. What we're doing for the employee is we're setting aside five days when they initially start. That way, they can, if something does pop up as far as a death in the family, or they have to travel, or what have you, they can use those days upfront instead of having to wait six months or what have you before accumulating that time. And then the rest of the time during the year, they would accumulate day six through day 10. So for their first three years of employment, they would incur 10 day, they would occur 10 days of vacation time. What we're changing is that in year three, we would add two additional days to 12. With the past policy, it was from year one, year five, until you were able to get an increase. So in year five, you would go from 10 to 15. With this, we're working with the employee to where they don't have to wait five years to get a little bit of an increase on their PTO. They're getting it at year three, and then they get the remainder of what they would have had at year five, at year five.
And we're talking about just like, what, one week of, one week paid, right?
Yes, sir. With the 10, 10 days of PTO would be, yeah.
They don't get half pay.
Five days would be equivalent to one week.
They don't get half pay or anything like that for another 20 days or anything like that, no?
No, sir. It would just be the, the PTO time.
Jeez. What's the industry standard?
For-
Is it a year? And what are, what are other, what are other governments?
So for municipalities, yes, we're falling in line as far as two weeks for starting, and then going from two weeks to three to four. Most of them cap between four and five. I can say that in the private sector, you could see it as high as five weeks, starting off with. I had that with my last position, but for municipalities, we're falling in line with that. Yes, sir.
Councilman Lance?
Back to the paternity. So if we did hire, let's say we hired an employee, and they ended up being several months pregnant, could we maybe, and just ideas, could we throw out maybe, have to be in employment for six months before consideration of paternity, something like that? You know, we got to have some kind of timeframe in there being an employee. It was come in and have a baby in a few months, and, but if we, if we drop that one year back and just put a consideration clause on it, you know, you could be considered at that point. Just a thought.
So what about, what if, what if we do this, council? I, I think there's a lot of good in this employee handbook, a lot of positive changes for it. What if we pass this through tonight, because it only takes one reading to pass it through, and we put our heads together and, and staff, I think you can see some of the, the conundrum that we're in, because we, we don't want to, to lose quality employees, and we don't want to put anybody in a position of hardship if they happen to get pregnant and happen to go into labor early, or they have an opportunity where they've been waiting for five years to adopt a child, they get hired, and then a month later, they get word that now the child they've been working five years to adopt, they can adopt, but now they're kind of, they're screwed. They're like, well, what do I do now? I only have five days of PTO that I've accrued. There's not much. And that's a very unfortunate situation. So if we pass this through, can we, can we commit to kind of workshopping this a little bit and seeing if we can maybe bring some improved language? I don't necessarily think we're going to solve it tonight, but I, I don't think that we should stop trying here.
Absolutely.
You guys, council, you guys good with that?
I'm not.
Okay.
Sorry. Now, now that we're talking about this, now that, we can't put the genie back in the bottle. I mean, I, I see, I see the good in it. I see that there's a lot of work been done. I'm so sorry. I see their faces freaking out now. What? Only because if we do pass this, then I want it to be with a specific stipulation that we do have the discussion. I think that we have an amazing opportunity. Most employees don't get to hear out the discussions on their benefits. It's not transparent. Most employees, you take it or leave it, right? So this is an amazing opportunity for us as a council to provide something phenomenal to our existing employees and the future families of those who are our staff. I think it's phenomenal. However, now that the cat's out the bag, I want to make sure that we do the right thing for those families, but also, we have to think very thoroughly what that looks like, because that is tax dollars. We want to stand for something, but we have to be, we have to protect all of that. I mean, there's a lot now. I mean, we can't just say, hey, let's go ahead and pass it after we pulled the genie out of the bottle. So what do we want to do?
Table it.
And, and the other side of that is, if we have employees, it, it's different, right? In the private sector, if you have an executive that's been there for two to three years, they naturally have more benefits than somebody else. So is this a blanket statement? Is this somebody that, you know, comes in as an admin? Is this somebody that has a, you know, an executive position? There's a lot now that we have to talk about. So with that being said, I mean, I would be happy to, you know, vote on this tonight, with the exception that we come back and we solidify that part of it, the maternity and paternity leave specifically. Is that something we can do? Bobby? Or Manager Dan?
We can. I mean, just for sort of tidiness sake, it's nice to have one complete document.
Spoken like a trucey.
Well, because then, all right, now, do you have the amended version, or do you, you know, I mean, we're this close, and let's pick a number and roll it.
What we can do is, we can make a motion to approve with the condition that we bring this, let's say, back forward at our second meeting in June to specifically discuss the paternity leave.
Okay.
I mean, I think we could do something like that. That way, it gets a lot of these things in place, a lot of the things that we all agree on, things that, you know, are needed, quite frankly. But then there's also now, there's something, there's, within the motion, the requirement that it does come back forward.
Yeah.
And that gives us and staff an opportunity, a month to figure out what we want to do, and then we can discuss it publicly as well.
And then also, just to note, if I'm not mistaken, I might, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the adoption piece comes in because that's state law. It's considered the same as a, what's, like a, a change of event or family status change. So it's-
Life status change.
Life status change. So it's looked at the same. And so I agree. If you adopt a baby or a 13-year-old, you should be able to spend that time with them. But I don't know that that qualifies as giving birth. And a mom who's had a C-section that needs eight weeks of care, or two, like some of us have had, or didn't have, you know? So I, I, I agree with that. If we pass it, and then come back in a month and, and put some, some meat to this.
Councilman Lance?
Would it be just coming back, and we discuss it further as we're doing right now? Or is staff going to try to work on some ideas to bring forward to us?
Good question.
Yes, sir. We, we can go ahead and work on some additional verbiage and have that submitted.
Because we're just going to be spinning those tires again at the same time, like we're doing here. We need some other ideas and-
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I think the thinking would be, Manager Dan, you have something?
I'm just wondering, I mean, if we're that close, can we just, as much as I hate to say it, can we just table it and get it right? Because again, it would be really nice to have it right the first time and not-
Would there be any negative ramifications for us tabling for another two weeks? Anybody that would be negatively impacted by us tabling it?
None that I would see from a personnel standpoint, sir.
Okay. Well, council, since we're tabling it for another two weeks, are there any other changes, anything else that you guys see that you might want to address within it, or are you guys good with everything else? I do, you know, I appreciate the language and the work that's been put into this, especially with this item. It's, as you can tell, a very important item that we're, we all care deeply about. But council, any other comments or anything else that you see? Okay?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
This also applies to the officers, right? Police officers? This handbook, these benefits, they do? Okay. Just want to make sure they're also included.
My understanding, it's all personnel. It's a personnel handbook.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. This is for all employees for the city manual.
Speaking to that, that does raise a question. You know, I notice for, for some of the outlines for like certification pay or things like that, it's not filled in what type of increase in pay they might get from a certification. So do we give like bilingual pay, certification pay, things, things like that?
Right now, no. So that's, that's what the verbiage that we added was to allow, you know, and we put it in there as departments, department-specific. So there are going to be certain things on the engineering side, or certain things in the permitting side. Bilingual was one that Bobby brought up as well, you know, for, for sure. I mean, there's no reason why it can't be. But rather than trying to solve that Rubik's Cube, we're just going to leave it up to the director and the city manager. Okay, is this, is this something that really helps out, you know, the citizenry? Yes, it does. Okay, well, then let's, let's figure out a sort of, you know, the appropriate certification pay for it.
So could we expect to see in the future on a per-department basis where there might be additional pay that's publicized? So people that are interested in working for the city might, might know, hey, if I speak Spanish, or if I speak Chinese, you know, I can come work for the city and get, and get additional pay. I mean, is there going to, is that just going to be a document that we keep during the hiring process, or is there going to be a policy that's established or a publication of what's?
Yes, it would be a policy. Again, since we're going from zero to something, you know, it just, for whatever reason, the only ones that have ever had it done were, was the police department. But I mean, every public works department I've ever seen, you know, hey, your, your minimum is this certification, but if you go the extra mile and get this one, well, then there's, there's money involved in that. Your minimum degree is, is a BS, but if you go and get your master's degree in this, and it helps us, and, you know, so we, we just need to flesh it out. So this is really just kind of a, to get a placeholder in there that, that it can be done. Because right now, it, it's, it's just, it's not even really an option for, for any of the department directors to do it right now.
Unless it's built into the handbook. So right now, this will establish the way-
Right.
Obviously, you're not in your head there to do it on a per-department basis, but council will have to essentially put those policies in place. So you'll have to bring them forward to us. Is that correct, Dan? Sorry, that was a, that was a question. So there will have to be a policy that comes before us for council to adopt, to implement, let's say, for public works, these certifications would dictate this, this pay?
I don't know that the policy would necessarily have to come to council. I mean, unless you want to stipulate that. I think it would just be an internal policy.
I, I don't know if we necessarily need to approve it, so to say, or if I wouldn't need, but I would love to be made aware of what benefits we're offering our, our employees, at least once, you know, public works, let's say, public works or finance, or, you know, for example, if we have an accountant, Rosie, that gets a CPA, becomes a CPA, well, they get X pay increase, or they get this or that. I'd love to know what the benefits package is that we're offering. All right.
I have one more.
Go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Okay. On the tattoo issue, sorry. What is our current policy? Are they allowed to show their tattoos or not?
It, it hasn't changed. The, the word, the words that are in there right now are already in there. We, we didn't propose any changes.
Okay. But I'm still asking, what, what do we allow now?
Exactly what, uh, no-
Do you allow your employees to show their tattoos?
We, we don't prohibit it.
No, you don't prohibit it?
It's not prohibited.
Okay. And so the, the verbiage of offensive tattoos has always been there? And have we ever had anybody complain about an employee's tattoos?
Since I've been here, I've had zero complaints.
Okay. The only thing I would consider offensive is profane language that I can understand. If it's in Chinese, I don't care what it says, right? Because I don't know that it's offending me or cussing me out. But that's one thing, and I, I, I meant to say that earlier, because I have had other clients that have the same thing, where they don't mind it as long as it's not profanity.
I mean, we, we could change that while we-
Yeah, I wouldn't want our employees out there and our citizens have a big F you, you know?
Are they big picture? Wouldn't be offended by-
Some big picture?
I'm not saying I wouldn't be offended. I think that that's a very broad thing to talk about, being offended. I think that, but profane language, like actual words, when you're representing the city as an employee, I come from, you know, I like everybody to be professional. That's just me. Times are changing. People used to not be able to get jobs with tattoos. Now they're cool. I think that it's discretionary, what, what the image is, but I do think that if, if it's a profane word, I mean, that's pretty, pretty bold. So that's just, you know, my opinion on that. But it's just one.
Manager Dan, you have something?
Yeah, Chief, Chief's telling me he's got a pretty good tattoo policy in, in the, in the police department that, that he can share with us, so that we can put that in there for next time.
Does he want to share it?
Go ahead, Chief.
We started talking-
I've, I've, we started talking about it, so I went ahead and looked it up. But basically what, the, the police department has separate policies and procedures outside of the city personnel policy as well. We have to do that because we, there are certain things that we as a police agency have to follow. And on our tattoo policy says at no time while the member is on duty representing the agency in any official capacity shall any offensive tattoo or body art be visible. Examples of offensive tattoos include, but not limited to, those that exhibit it, exhibit or advocate discrimination, those that exhibit gang supremacist or extremist group affiliation, and those that depict, promote drug use, sexual explicit acts or other obscene material.
I love it. Done. Perfect. Can we add the, the word profanity in there?
We can, but I think other obscene material covers that.
Oh, done. Okay. That's it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from, from council? I know staff, you guys have spent how many hours doing this, would you say, Chad, working on this?
This has been months, sir.
Months. So it's been months. And so I think it's, it shows the level of detail and importance this carries for council. You know, we had a little bit of discussion at our last meeting, but now you can see there's more discussion that's, that's happening. So we'll, we'll get there. We'll get there. Patience is a virtue, as they say. So council, I'll make a motion to table agenda item number two. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Mayor Protem Sarmiento. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously to table seven to zero. Next, we have agenda item number three, consideration of possible action to approve ordinance 2024-0-21. Rosie, we'll turn over this one to you.
Good evening, mayor, council. In front of you is another complicated budget transfer request. This first one, this first part of it is from the ARPA fund that we received from the government a couple of years back. We had it sitting in deferred revenue until we were ready to use it. We are now ready to use it. So we are now going to recognize it as a grant revenue and not in the deferred revenues. And we are going to put part of it into the FM 1128 waters sewer line extension up to the new public works and the fire department lift station, the police station and the McCoy lift station. Abatement. Now, yes. With the beginning balance that we had in that project, we're moving that to the police station construction for the FFNE, at least to cover part of it. So that the grant is completely funding the FM 1128 project. And then the rest of it, we're putting it as a wastewater improvement. For anything that comes up that we need to improve, plus engineering costs on that WRF, that's going to be needed for inspections and testing of the building construction. The second part of it is the bond proceeds that we just got not too long ago. I'm recognizing the revenue there and the issuance cost and assigning the 40 million to the WRF construction and 10 million for the other projects. Until we know specifically the name of the projects, I just put it generically. And then the last part of it is I'm increasing the revenue for the budget for the court because of course, since citations have doubled, prosecuting fees have also doubled. So I'm giving them an additional expense so that they can cover the rest of the year.
Okay. Thank you, Rosie. So I just want to make sure that I understand what, what's happening here. So because we, we received ARPA funds that were never used, we're using those, that money. Kind of the three main areas that this money is allowing us to be used for is for the water sewer line extension up 1128 to serve, to serve what buildings again? What buildings will, will they serve?
Those will serve, the line will grow all the way to, what's the name of the street for the fire department?
Dogwood.
Dogwood, up to Dogwood.
Okay. And is this on the east side or the west side of 1128?
Well, both. It's going to be on the west and then ultimately over on, on the east whenever we make the connection.
It'll be crossed over.
Okay. For, for that, have we reached out to any of the residents that, or businesses that are along 1128 up to Dogwood about tapping in?
We, we added, well, and we'll talk about that project in a second because that, that one's coming up next. But we added service connections, long, long and short connections in there in case someone actually wants to connect. That's the same way that we did Lewis Lane. So it'd be great if they do. I mean, if we get new customers from this. If, if they do it within, within a year, then there are no impact fees. If they wait, then the impact fees go to half. And if, if they wait for, I think after two years, then, then they're on their own.
Okay. I'll have a follow-up question to that, but I'll wait till the, to the next agenda item. So we're taking that 3.1, part of it's going to the water sewer line extension. Part of it's going to police station construction for some of the equipment and furnishings that chief needs. Not all of it, but, but some of it.
Well, just to qualify, so none of the ARPA money is going to that project. That's why you see the exact same number going from 1128. So the 1.4 that's in, in the 1128 project right now, that's what's getting moved over to FFNE for the police station.
Okay. So the money that was set aside for the 1128 is being moved over to the police station. And then we're using the 3.1 essentially for the water line extension and then also for some wastewater improvements.
Got it.
That's correct.
Perfect. That makes sense now. All right. Well, council, do you guys have any comments or questions regarding this budget amendment? Hearing none. Councilman Bonner, can I get your first main motion here?
Let's see here. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this. This consideration for amending ordinance number 2023032.
All right. So we have a, a motion to get this ordinance approved here. Do I have a second? We have a second from Councilman Hudson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously seven zero. Great job presenting that, Rosie. Thank you for all the details and information. We'll now move on to agenda item number four, and Dan, we're going to turn this one over to you. Consideration of possible action to award the contract for the Masters Road Utility Improvements and McCoy Road Lift Station Consolidation Project for $2,814,550 to Materials Tech and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Thank you, mayor. This is a, a, a project that may seem long overdue and, and it is in the sense that it took almost a year to get approval through, through tax dot. This project is, like Rosie was just saying, this is running water and sewer. Well, let me start. It's running water from the police station as it currently sits up north on 1128 to the new public works facility. It's running sanitary from Terra Estates all the way up to both of those, those projects. So right now, the, the police station is still on, on a septic system. So they'll actually have gravity sewer with this project. So that was one project. It was identified in our, gosh, our capital improvement plan years ago. And then the other project was abating an old lift station. And we say it's a lift station. It's really just a manhole with a grinder pump in it that is right on McCoy, right across the street from the high school. The, we used to call it the Simmerhandsel Lift Station. So the, the, the small little trailer park that's there right now on the corner is really the only customers to this lift station. So this would, would get rid of this lift station altogether. So they would all be on gravity on Lewis all the way back down to Palmetto. So since the two projects were so closely related, there's going to be so much work going on on Lewis. We had the same engineering firm on both projects. We combined them to get them all done with, with one contractor. So we, we did go out for bids and actually got several, we got eight bids for this one, which was fantastic. They were all very close. Materials Tech is, is the, was the apparent low bidder for, for both the, the base bid and the ad alternate. So we are recommending full approval of the total bid at $2,814,550, which is almost, almost a million dollars under what we had anticipated. So that's very exciting because usually projects that were designed pre-COVID are coming in much, much higher. But I believe materials, well, we got Wale here, we've got Freezing Nichols here, we've got our whole team, if anybody, if we have any specific questions. But again, this project could not have come any quicker because if, if I didn't mention it, we're building two new facilities that will need water and sewer. So the fact that all these are going to be happening at the same time, this is, is fantastic. I believe there's 150 days, I think, in this contract. Does it sound right, Molly? So that, that should be completed this year.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. Any comments or questions? Mayor Protem Sarmiento?
Okay, so I'm, I'm okay with this. I just have a question that may or may not pertain to this bid being awarded. But recently, at my hour roundtable, the business, a roundtable that was hosted a few weeks ago, we heard from some local business owners that have asked, how can they get in on the bid process? Because we have a lot of local businesses that could be subcontractors to the big contractors that are building our facilities down 1128. And they feel like they don't even have access to be able to bid on that. And they would like to know if there's a way that when we do award these bids out to these, these are massive amounts, 44 million, 56 million. There's, we're wondering if there's a way that we can put in some type of wording or verbiage that says whoever we award these to should, shall, try to at least get a percentage of their subcontractors from Manville local businesses. And if they don't pass those stipulations, then they look outside. But what are your thoughts on that?
Yes. You know, usually the first place that we send folks to is the chamber. If they, if they become a partner with the chamber, then it's very easy for us to tell our, our general contractor, hey. And, and we do. I mean, we tell them that, of course, use local when you can. On some of the bigger projects, they were stipulated prices. I know the police station and the public works facility. So again, it was a suggestion. If, if you can, use local, local folks whenever you can.
And how many of them are actually reaching out to our local businesses?
I don't know.
Yeah. So that's something that obviously I know that we're going to have a lot of development coming. But it is a frustration of our local business owners that can do the job, that are fully capable of doing it. And they are members of our chamber. So I just wanted to ask, what can we do? Maybe we as council need to maybe put that into something that we require that. We can't say we're for businesses and we want to develop and go for the bigger, you know, companies that are going to subcontract this. And, and I heard that they are subcontracting it to sometimes people they know that are 100 miles away and they're paying for hotel stay here down the street rather than getting somebody local. That's all I'm saying. So I would like to see that or at least have the discussion of how we can materialize that.
And the mayor and I, on a related note, the mayor and I have been talking about a, an upcoming how to do business in Manville. Yeah. So I think that'll really tie into that is August, yeah, in, in August. So that, that's really the, the idea behind that forum is that we bring folks in. How do we get on, is there, let's create a list. How do you get on the list? Where are you going to store the list?
Yeah. Well, don't we already have a certification process or they, a verification where they have to come and fill out something if they want to be a vendor or like build a pool here?
Sure.
Or construction? So if they're already on that list and they've gone through that due diligence step, then what's the next step of that? We talked about it, right? What's that checklist of how to do business with Manville? Also, how do we open a business in Manville? Like, I would just like to see that, that maybe in August or before we start having the discussion because these are big awards. And this is, you know, and I know we're saying yes, but I'd like to see some, some action behind that.
Yeah, I think we can bring something forward there and build it into our RFQ and RFP process that there must be a prioritization and ask those that are submitting the bids, how do you plan to do this? Track it and report on it as well.
Well, and there's a lot of municipalities and government entities that require you to award a certain percentage to minority-owned businesses, right? And they have to have their certifications. And, and I'm a, I'm a female-owned business. And so that opens up doors for me that some, some businesses have to award 25% of their business to minorities. In this case, I think putting it on our RFQ process of at least 10% goes to local businesses that, that meets the requirements, obviously, that they have. We don't want them to just hire anybody, whether, if they're not certified or they can't do the job, fine. But if they can do the job, they should be the first to get it, in my opinion. Thank you, manager Dan and mayor Dan.
Yeah. So as for, with that, Dan, if we could look to either in June or July, get something on the agenda for some discussion. I think what would be good too is for, for council to get some insight into, you know, what Wale does when he goes through this process. You know, how do you guys, how do you guys look at bids? Kind of get, you know, pull back the curtains a little bit and get more of an understanding. And that'll help us, one, appreciate what you guys have to go through when you put out the bids and review the bids. And also allows us to maybe give some opportunities for feedback and we can meet with key stakeholders about ways to improve the process moving, moving forward. It's, you always want to prioritize shopping local, but at the same, at the same point in time, you want to make sure that you don't cost the taxpayers unnecessarily more money for shopping local as, as well. So there's, there's a balance there. Dan, one question that I have about this for the connections maybe, Robbie, this is more for, for you. How are we going to notify those that are along this extension that there is the opportunity for them to connect at no impact fee cost to them?
Well, we would actually go door to door.
Door to door, okay.
Yeah. And if no one, no one's available, we will leave a door anchor.
Okay, awesome. And then when we talk about the McCoy Road Lift Station, where is that? What, what's the location of that?
It's actually right across from Manville High School, like, like a little bit ways down from Weekly's.
Okay. Is it near that, right near that trailer park?
It's right behind that trailer park.
Okay, right there. Okay.
It's a big privacy fence that goes around it.
Gotcha. Okay, awesome. Any other comments or questions from council? Anything from you, Dan? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to award this contract? We have a motion to award the contract from Councilman Lance, a second from Councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously seven to zero. Congratulations, Materials Tech. Agenda item number five, Dan, we're turning this one over to you. Consideration of possible action to award the contract for the central water reclamation facility project for $40 million to CSA Construction, Inc. and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Dan?
Thank you, mayor. And another project that we're all very, very, very familiar with. And, and we have folks from CSA here tonight. We've also got Morales and Richard. We've got a lot of, the whole team that's been working on this project. So this is our, you know, the affectionate term is, is water reclamation facility. It sounds a little better than a wastewater treatment plant, but that's what it is. This is for the, the first 1 million gallon per day plant components and a new administration building and, and everything that, that you can imagine to get into this, to get into this new plant. The new plant will be on corporate directly across the street from the existing plant. So if, if the existing plant's on the east side of the road, this one's going to be on the west side of the road. So we can talk, I, I promise you, you, you can ask more or have more detailed information than you ever thought you'd know. We've been working on this project for, my goodness, probably three years in design. Very, very involved design. It's, it's, you know, from top to bottom, our, our guys, especially Ernie and his team as far as, and Ray, who are actually going to be operating this plant. I mean, this is, it's, it's new. This is not a conventional plant with the big clarifiers, clarifiers like you normally see. This is a membrane plant with ultraviolet lights instead of chlorine. So it's, it's really an exciting thing. Just to go back in time, council decided to, to do this and staff decided to do this instead of a conventional way because at the time, the costs were not that much different as far as the treatment costs. But more importantly, if we were going a conventional route, this would be about as, as much as we could get on this one site as about a million gallons. Whereas going this route, this, this can be the home of our, of our ultimate wastewater treatment facility for the, for the city. We estimate that it can handle up to four, maybe even five million gallons a day on this one spot just because of the, the, the type of operation. So. We only got two bids on this particular project. This was not a, a low bidder type project, kind of to what the mayor and Crystal were talking about. This was a little more, quite a bit more involved. And even the, the lowest bid did, did not come in at, within our budget. So CSA has, has worked and so has Morales and his team tirelessly to, to shave off, not the scope of the project, but which things, you know, were we, were we hoping to accomplish now instead of waiting till phase two? So we're, it's, it's not a lesser product. It's not, you know, we're not getting a, a, a quality product or anything like that. I think they're just, they, they all worked really well to, to figure out what do we have to have now? And my directive was simple. You, you need to get it at 40 million or less. And they heard that. And here we are because, you know, council authorized a, a significant bond issuance for this and that number was 40 million. So here we are at 40 million exactly. And I'm, I'm really proud of, of the team for, for working through all of those difficulties to get us there.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Do I have any comments or questions from council?
Yep.
We'll go Councilman Lance first and then we'll go Mayor Protem.
With these reductions here, you feel confident that we're going to have a good quality plant?
Yes, sir.
Some of these are pretty big, pretty big reductions, but we're still, we're going to be in good shape.
Yeah, a lot of them are canopies, which we'll, we'll need. And if we can't figure out a way to do those, you know, now, then. And if we can't figure out a way to do those, you know, now, then we can do those within our operating budget. Honestly, all the canopies out at Public Works, we built. So, you know, that's one way to save. The biggest one was, was the lift station itself, changing the methodology, turning that into a caisson structure, and moving it on the other side of the pipeline. That's, that's, that's the biggest difference right there.
I wish I knew what that meant, but I see it's 1.3 million, whatever it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem?
Yes, I, I was reading about the UV water treatment because it's new. And, you know, I drink a lot of water, and I've been doing a lot of research on just water and chlorine. And where are we, what, what are we doing for the UVs? Because I've, I've read that what it does is it doesn't get rid of everything. It gets rid of microorganisms that get rid of, for instance, COVID, et cetera. But how good is it when the power goes out? Because isn't that the issue with pump detention? Is that if the power goes out, it doesn't work? And I've read that the UV water treatment facilities also operate off electricity.
Marali, why don't you make your way up here? But the, the one thing I'll mention as he's coming, of course, so this one is our, is our wastewater. So right now, we still use traditional chlorine at our water treatment. We haven't talked about going UV to, at the water treatment.
Okay, so this is UV for just the?
This is cleaning your wastewater before discharging it into the creek.
Okay, so before it goes down into the Brazoria stuff, cleaning it before it goes out there, not what we are recycling to drink ourselves. Okay, then that answers that question. I just want to make sure we're not drinking that type of water, because I've read about that, so.
Well, this is a follow up question to that.
Go ahead.
If, if in the situation where power does shut off, you know, are we going to have to stop treating wastewater? Or what, what is the backup to the situation? I mean, just generators, right?
It's, it's an enormous, I mean, that's one of the biggest expenses is a natural gas generator out there. Yes, sir. To, to feed the whole plant, or to, to supply power to the whole plant.
Yeah, there'll be a 1,000 kilowatt natural gas generator as part of this project.
Why not 2,000?
Maybe the next phase.
Sorry, Mayor Protem?
No, that, no, that's a perfect question. So that's basically it, is we are installing something to mitigate what just happened in Houston, which nobody expected, a million people out of power.
And do, do you have to do that now, down here?
Yeah, I think that was one decision, why the city decided to go with a natural gas generator, because it's not as affected during an inclement weather. You have gas supply here as opposed to hauling off diesel to the site to keep the generators going.
Yeah, getting a diesel truck to the plant during Harvey to replenish the diesel would be very difficult. So this will be natural gas, always have a connection.
That sounds exciting, honestly. It really does, it sounds next generation.
Yeah, and even, that was one of the things that, you know, during design, you know, as you're, as we're going through this process, not many things got cheaper as we were going through this, but the connection to Center Point to get that natural gas hookup was one of those items, so.
And natural gases is obviously a lot less expensive than the power, and power continues to go up. Right? It's cleaner. Okay, so it's, 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 the advantages of it are, what? Can you tell me the first, the top five advantages? Huh?
Are on UV or the generator?
On everything, on this new facility, right? It's, it's, it sounds like it's good for the environment, right? Because it's cleaner with natural gas. It's the new method of doing things, right? So there's got to be some advantages that you can spit off that our constituents would be excited about.
And like, like Dan mentioned, the, the, you found, you found a space, you know, you don't have to go and find another several acre tract of land to have another wastewater plant. You can have, we can have it all done here. That's part of the process. Like you said, a smaller footprint for the same amount of capacity to treat, cleaner. I mean, even the, the membrane, MBR process is a better process. I mean, it's a more consistent, you know, cleaner water. So even what's going down into the, the creeks is a cleaner water.
And it allows the city to reuse the water in the future. If you have any reuse applications, you have really clean water that comes from the membrane treatment. That's also another driver for selecting this membrane technology. And like Dan mentioned, at this site, at Corporate Drive site, because we chose this technology, we can fit up to four to five MGD. If you went with a conventional, we could fit only maybe two MGD at the most. So you get more, because of the compact footprint, you get more capacity at the smaller site.
That's interesting. And how many other municipalities are adopting this new UV technology?
There are several in Texas. The closest one is in Sienna Plantation.
Oh, Sienna?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would assume that, or I won't assume, because I'm not an expert, you guys are. So the water that we're cleaning and we're putting into the creek, what good does that do if the downwater that comes from Houston isn't treated as well? Does it collect, does it collect together? Yeah? So we're doing our due diligence, but they're not.
So the TCQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, basically does modeling of all the streams in Texas. So they, they will kind of take the, you know, Manville plus Houston water and, you know, take the resulting combination, and y'all are just helping the environment by providing a better quality effluent at that point. But obviously, Houston's a lot bigger.
Yeah, dirtier. Okay, thank you.
It can be used for irrigation, for like golf courses, where you don't.
And for like, if we end up with, with roads out there that have center medians, it could be used for tree watering and things like that.
Yeah, this effluent would meet what is called as a type one classification. And for type one, we can use it for like construction and for irrigation purposes.
Councilman Perry, I think you had a comment?
Yeah, we were, we were just having a sidebar celebration, hearing that it was going to be natural gas, because recently, some of the commentary, the expert commentaries on some of the most recent power failures were to actually use natural gas instead of the diesel. So we're, we're ahead of the game. Great.
Well, I, I have two questions, gentlemen. One, I've heard from some of the residents that live on Lake Ridge Drive, which is going to back up to the city's facility, concerns about the impact, impact that they're going to experience during construction and then after construction regarding light pollution, noise and smell. So can you speak to, one, how are you going to mitigate impact for their quality of life during construction? And then also those three areas, how those are mitigated after the plant is operational?
So let me start with after the construction. Included in the treatment process are odor control systems that will capture the foul air from the treatment process and it'll clean it up, and so that we minimize the odor that way. And then on the west side of the site, there is a berm that provides a visual barrier to the site from that community. What else?
Talk to me about light, light pollution and, and noise pollution as well.
The, some of the equipment that could produce noise, they are enclosed inside a building. So that was, we were intentional about keeping, putting that inside a building and setting some threshold levels for noise, that way we don't exceed the nuisance levels for, for noise, basically.
For after construction?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about, what about for light, light pollution?
I can answer it. So just like any other development, lighting is handled, I mean, that's already in our code, so they can't have any light spill over. So if there, if it needs a shroud, or it needs to be redirected or whatever, it'll have to, it can't go over the property line. So we, we've already, we've already got things in place to do that, to make sure that that's happening. Code enforcement knows what to look for on that.
And Dan, can you also speak to the hours of operation for when construction will be happening on, on days that it cannot happen?
Other than concrete, that, that might be the only tricky part. You know, if, if they wind up with a, with a concrete pour in the summer, which we go through with everybody, you know, you only have till about nine or 10 o'clock in the morning before you, it gets too hot, and then you can't pour concrete, it'll set up too fast. So other than those specific times, you know, where you need a, an early 4:00 AM pour or something, now, I will tell you, there's a concrete plant very, very close. I don't know if our contractor is going to use them, but, you know, they, they get started very early in the morning as well. So now, once the plant gets going, then it's 24/7. So it'll always be running. But again, like, like Marali mentioned, our old plant, the blowers, you, you could not, you can't get within, probably from me to Robbie, and, and it just, without hearing protection on. So this is going to be so much better for our, for our employees as well, and, and the residents, as far as noise goes.
Will CSA be requesting a variance from the city regarding if they have to do pours at 4:00 AM in the morning, as that's outside the hours of operation allowed by current noise?
The, the way that we handle that now is they'll submit, any contractor that needs to pour early, they'll, they'll put in a submittal, and, and we run that through, we just walked out, through chief and, and all of us to make sure that we know now, look, here's the thing, we're going to let you do it, but if we get any complaints, then you can't do it anymore. So it's that simple. So, because we get that all throughout the summer, that request, I'm saying.
Okay, sounds good. Last question that I have is I know the city's property, the southern portion of it aligns right there where it's a Blue Water Drive. Is that a right of way that goes through and connects with Corporate? Or is there no right of way?
The right of way does. It goes through, right to the parcel that's there. And we've, we've visited with those, those folks that own that parcel and said that if, if they ever want to connect to that, that would, that would be, that would be great. And that way, there would be a connection between Blue Water and Corporate. That's not part of this project, though. We'll only be coming in and out on Corporate.
So the, the city's property, none of the right of ways on the city's property?
The right of way is to the west of our property, isn't it? West and south. I'd have to pull up the site plans to know for sure, but.
You mean that the entrance to the site?
Well, the entrance is only on the east, of course, off of Corporate, but we don't, it's not contiguous to the right of way. The right of way is to the south, right?
Right.
Okay, because I just, I wanted to ask, because if the right of way, of course, if it's on the city's property, then we have an obligation to build our half of it, just like we hold any other developer too. Or we have to request a variance from city council. So I was looking on our city GIS, and I don't see any right of way on the city's property, so to say. But when I look at the city's property, though, from an alignment standpoint, it would make sense to have it on the city's property. So that's where I'm a little, want to make sure that we don't miss an opportunity here for alignment with streets to connect Corporate and Blue Water. Because Tech Dot refuses to give us a traffic light right there at Corporate. And so if there's a way to get through and cut through Blue Water to get to a traffic light for people that might need to go out that way.
It doesn't look like the parcel connects to Corporate. The, the right of way doesn't extend all the way to Corporate, that's the problem.
So the city has no right of way that we're obligated to build as a part of this project?
Do you recall? I don't, I don't believe so. We're building a lot of road within, certainly within this, yeah, within the project.
People will use.
Okay, since nobody knows, can we get a follow up on that before our next, next meeting? Okay. Because if that's not included in the cost, but there is an obligation that's there, then we need to understand the, the impact of that. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilman Bonner?
Probably for, for Dan. Is there any added employment opportunity once this goes online?
I guess I'll ask Robbie that question.
I believe so. I believe we're going to add additional two or three operators, right, Ray?
Two?
Yeah, two operators for this plant.
Is that all, Councilman? Okay, so for those two, when do we expect the plant to be operational?
So the construction duration is 900 days or 30 months. So depending on when we start, it'll be 30 months from then is when we anticipate the plant to be in operation.
Okay, and, and at what point, Robbie or Ray, would we need to bring on these two employees in order to ensure that they're up to speed and ready to hit the ground day one? Thinking from a project plan, we know go-live date, so we'll have to backdate into that. We're probably going to want to get them involved in probably some of the construction as well, so that way they know the inner workings. When are we expecting to need to hire these employees?
Yeah, we were actually looking at this budget year to bring in at least one for this plant.
Okay.
Yeah, starting this year.
That's a good question, Councilman. So appreciate that, thanks, Harvey. Any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to award the contract?
Make a motion.
You have a motion from the Mayor Protem? We have a second from Councilman Hudson, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. And Dan, I think that's our largest awarded contract in the history of the city.
By far, yes, sir.
Something to be proud and scared of. All right, next one, Dan, we're on a roll with you. Consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to pursue available CDBG funds and execute the agreement between Brazoria County and the city.
Yes, sir. So Commissioner Cade reached out to us a week, week and a half ago, and said that he had $15,000 in, in available CDBG funds, wanted to know if we were interested in it. Knee jerk reaction is, yes, of course we're interested in money. What are the stipulations? So it has to be spent in a low to moderate income area. It can be spent on utilities, okay, great. And they were kind enough, kind enough to provide us with a, with a map of where our low to moderate income areas are, according to them, according to HUD. So we identified a project that we, we can use these funds on around King and Bissell. There are two water lines that are dead ends right now, kind of like what I was talking about earlier. So we've, we've had dreams, I guess, and aspirations, it just hasn't become a project yet, of connecting those two and looping them and having some more fire protection down there. So if we do that project, it's going to be more expensive than, than just the grant money, so it's, it's going to be, there's going to be more to it. But that could at least pay for the hydrants. That would be, what, three hydrants probably, something like that? But the reason, we wanted to bring it before you tonight is the, the grant policy specifically, so it's, it seems very cut and dry to just pursue, pursue these grant, grant dollars. Some of y'all know there's a little bit of history in, in chasing grants with, obviously with our previous city manager and previous council. And the grant policy specifically talks about, do you have it handy? Talks about any grant programs that have requirements, prerequisites or restrictions that limit, reduce, modify or eliminate the city's local control of revenues, land use authority, subdivision or development regulations, police powers or any other authority provided under the city's home mill charter or ordinances will not be pursued. So what does that, what does all, all that mean? CDBG, Community Development Block Grant is through HUD, and one of their, obviously, tenants is to affirmatively further fair housing. We just adopted Fair Housing Month in April. I guess the concern was, are we, are we violating our own grant policy here? And internally, I've asked Bobby to look at it and said, yes, maybe, possibly, I don't know. And so, again, this is, this is a sort of a, a, a long, a long history, I guess, of, of pursuing grants. And I know, Mayor, you have a lot of involvement in this, so I hate to put it back on you, but the question is, do, do we want to pursue this grant for $15,000, knowing that we could potentially be, dare I say, violating our own grant policy?
Well, if I could fill it in, the, there are federal grant money that comes through the state to the county and then to the city. In the grant document we sign off on, the grant contract, the city would be agreeing to follow all of these federal laws and regulations. And the regulations aren't really spelled out in the contract document, they relate to a lot of what's called Code of Federal Regulations at the federal level, CFR documents. And there's literally dozens of these in the contract documents. The one that's gotten a lot of attention, really from the political atmosphere, is this covenant that's coming in all the federal grants that you have to affirmatively further fair housing. Well, what does that mean? To affirmatively further fair housing? And that's where the politics comes into, with the administrative people arguably having the right to say affirmatively fair, affirmatively furthering fair housing means to remove barriers to fair housing, which could include the city's zoning. If there's a disparate amount of opportunities for fair housing, and they find that the city's zoning is one of those things getting in the way, the threat or the, the political thing was that they could come in and basically trump. political thing was that they could come in and basically trump city's zoning through this grant by saying, you know, you don't have in place, or you do have in place barriers to fair housing. And this got a lot of attention, but it really hasn't panned out, to my knowledge. There was a famous case, the Westchester case, that ended up being settled. But this spurred a lot of these articles and stuff. And the former city manager was getting forwarded these through the city managers and through the IMLA and the TCMA and a lot of these things that got on the horizon, that a lot of people were sensing that this was a threat. So in response, I think that's where the grant policy came. I think that's probably from, what, 2021? So the policy was, well, let's not take grant money where we have a chance of it affecting our land use, our zoning. So manager Dan says, hey, this, this CDBG grant contract, is that going to have us run the risk of our own grant policy? Or does this, is this could potentially affect our land use, our zoning? So I pulled the contract, pulled some of the CFRs, pulled another CFR which defines the major term that's in the CFR that I went through about almost 300 pages of CFR stuff to try to figure some of this out. And that's what it all boils down to. What is considered a barrier to fair housing? It doesn't go any further than that in the definition. So that's why you say, well, I think we have a pretty good cross-section of our housing for, you know, we have, you know, off-price points. We've got a very good mix of, you know, racial and ethnic groups. I don't think we have anything in place that is, that really constitutes a barrier to fair housing. So I think our risk would be very low that we would be in trouble with this grant and violating our own grant policy. But I don't have any statistics to say, what is the composition of the low-income and racial and all that stuff? This is kind of me just being in the community saying, I don't think we've got those neighborhoods, or whatever you want to call them, that would be, you know, packing certain people into low-income. I think we've got a pretty good cross-section. So I think that it's low, but for a $15,000 grant, is that worth drawing any type of attention to us, even though the risk is low? And that's where I kind of left it at Dan, and that kind of comes to the council now. So that's kind of where, where it all stems from and how it manifests itself in the grant. It does say that in the grant. And HUD, the federal government, has a nice little tool, which I've pulled down, and it's an assessment of your fair housing in your community for local governments to use. And it has a list of factors, including your zoning and your occupation, your codes, and your, you know, that might include our subdivision regulations. And it says, this is how you can identify cities, you know, if you have any barriers to, to fair housing by using this assessment tool. And it starts off with, you know, basically the disparity of these opportunities for fair housing, which I don't think we even start off with having that. So if you have the disparity, then you're supposed to find these barriers that can, you can remove that can, you know, help that disparity. But I'm not sure we even have the disparity. So all this is a long way to say that we're not entirely sure, the way the federal government has this grant structured and the way we have to sign off on it, if this would affect it. I think the risk is really, really low, but it's not zero. And I just leave it at that. I would feel confident in going for this grant. But like I said, it's $15,000 and I don't know if that's, if the amount is really, if it's worth it, or if it's something... Because I know the former city manager was very passionate about it, and I think councilmember Albert, who was on council, was passionate about it. They had a lot of discussions about it, which I've heard about, but I was not party to. I think, Mayor, you seem to know a lot about the, the subject as well. So I'm going from what little I've known, but I've done a lot of reading on this today through the CFR stuff. You might know more from the, the practical application of what's really happening out there in the world. But there's a lot of articles pop up that kind of, or like the, you know, scary kind of articles, which are, I don't know how that really pans out in real life. So maybe you know more about that part.
Yeah, I can, I can weigh in here a little bit. So in the past, the city lost out on 300, and not to replay old tapes, but the city lost out on $380,000 that was going to be used for a SCADA system because of fears of what the federal government might come in and do. And while, yes, this is only $15,000, you know, any HUD funding that might come out in the future, you know, we're setting a precedence that we will not take it because we do not believe in, we are not affirming our pursuit of fair housing. When you research a lot of the cases of what's happening across the nation, it's because municipalities do not have expert finance directors like we do in Rosie, and they use the money for purposes that they have not intended to use it for. A big situation happened on Galveston Island where they used it for something else. So the federal government came in and forced them to find the money to do the project that they said that they were going to use the, the money for. And so in order to get a policy in place in the past, instead of just leaving it to the discretion of the city manager, but allowing council to have a say like we're having now, we put in, we put in that, we put in that language. I've not found a situation where the federal government has come in and stripped anybody of their zoning. Cities all across our county, all across our state, all across our nation leverage this funding to do a lot of good. The city of Manville has missed out on a lot of HUD funding in the past because of this, this fear. But as I look at it from a very analytical perspective, I think that fear is, is not based in any reality from what I've seen. But it is a risk, as Bobby mentioned, that we have to be aware of based off of the, based off of the language. So while in this situation, yes, it is $15,000, there is a lot more money that's out there in the future through HUD that we need to consider whether or not we are going to participate in that. So yes, there was a lot of debate back and forth between councilman Albert and our former city manager about this very item. But I'd love to get councilman Perry's perspective on it. I know you work, you know, in your line of, you know, with a lot of different type of funding from the federal government.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I have headaches every day because of the Code of Federal Regulation. So, but this is just a thought that I want to put out there. So there are funding up, we know we have great needs in the city of Manville, and there are funding opportunities that if we, if we interpret our ordinance in the way that it's written and we pass upon these opportunities. I guess my question is, if it's in the Code of Federal Regulations, that means it's codified law that Congress has put in place. If we were to be found in violation of those fair housing guidelines, whether we take the money or not, the federal government will have the authority to force us to comply. So why would we miss out on funding over a fear of possibly not being in compliance? Our goal should be, within reason, to be in compliance so they would never have the need to look at us and enforce those. And I'm only asking.
I can answer. This particular one, just because there was that Westchester case, and that's exactly what happened, of course, you have to abide by the fair housing laws and you can't discriminate. Problem is, when you take the grant money, you're not only promising not to discriminate, you're promising to take an affirmative step towards removing barriers. And as the case of the judge in that case held that a local government entity that certifies to the federal government, it will affirmatively further fair housing as a condition of its receipt of federal funds, must consider the existence and impact of race discrimination on housing opportunities and choice in its jurisdiction. Westchester County was held to repeatedly have falsely certified that it was affirmatively furthering fair housing. So the certification that they signed off on, on the grant, they said that was wrong. They didn't do that. And then millions of federal dollars that had been dispensed to Westchester County, and I think it ended up settling. So the last part of it, I guess they really don't talk about. But there's a Harvard article that, a legal article that I pulled up that actually talks about that case. So it's a little bit different than generally having to abide by fair housing and taking the money where you have to take a further affirmative step than you ordinarily would.
Yeah, and definitely not to disparage Westchester County. But when I lived in New York, my wife worked in Westchester County for one of the local municipalities mayor's office, the chief of staff for the mayor. So I somewhat understand that particular situation because there were some questionable, anyway, not to disparage another county, but there, there were more specific reasons why more light was shed upon that situation than what we would have, especially in the city of Manville, when we look at our demographics.
Mayor pro temp?
Why is it only 15,000? Did you ask Commissioner Cade, why can't we get 30, or 50, or 100? Did we get the crumbs?
I can, I can speak to that a little bit if you want to. So what the county will do is, they have a list of what they rotate through for cities, and they make funding available. And so every three to five years, the city of Manville will be the first one on the list to utilize the funding. As they work through the list, let's say, Pearland takes, let's say they have a million dollars available. Pearland takes 400,000. Alvin takes 300,000. I will call and he takes this. So then, when they still have money, they work through the list to see if anybody can take it. And then if nobody throughout the county can take it, the county can't use it, it's unused funding at that point. So I think it just got to the point, my impression, I don't know if commissioner's office gave a specific answer, was, it's kind of what they had left, so they're seeing if there's any city out there that can use it. And since Commissioner Cade loves Manville so much, he came to us with the 15,000, so.
The other question that I have is, can we ask Commissioner Cade or his office to find out, with these type of grants, I'm sure he has experience giving them to Manville and Alvin and other cities that are in the county, have they had this situation where they're misused and they've had to come back and have this?
Well, the former city manager did that through the county, through the grant person mystery from the county, and they had no idea what about any of this was about when he talked to her.
So what you're saying, so, so the commissioner's office did not know about that?
The commissioner's office, I do know that at the time, the grant person, this was raised with the grant person, who said, we'll call Austin, try to get some information. And I don't know that there was really any information that certainly didn't change the former city manager's opinion that this was putting the city at risk, so.
And if I could, Mayor, I mean, Tammy, I could tell you for years, the only way that any of our capital improvement projects were done were through CDBG projects and MEDC projects. So you could argue that cat's out of the bag anyway. We've already accepted CDBG dollars for, for years. I mean, that's how most, ironically, most of the water and sewer projects on the South Side, that's how they, they came to be anyway.
And I think it's a great, I think Commissioner Cade called you, Dan, and then his chief administrator, Jackie, reached out, reached out to me. And, and I love the fact that they thought of us and they said, hey, we have some money. Can you use it for anything? So, you know, something's better than nothing. But Tammy, can you speak to that a little bit, just some of the history with CDBG?
So Nancy Fudenberg is no longer with the city, but she worked very, very well with Dolores during the time that Dolores was the mayor. And back then, the city had very, 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 very little money to do many projects at all. So never were the funds ever denied. And we were quite grateful when it came around, when other cities did not use all their funds, where we'd get the opportunity to accept further funds. It was literally just within, during the COVID time, when funds became available and it was decided to deny them based off of pretty much the way that the zoning was and the fair housing of not having Section 8 housing available, or apartments throughout the city, and not wanting to weaken our zoning ordinance to allow for that. But we do, do the proclamation every year saying that we do the fair housing, we're not discriminating in that sense. So we've never not adopted that, which makes it able for us to get those funds, should we choose to.
So council, what do you, what do you think? What would you like to see happen here?
I'd like to see more grants.
Any other comments or questions, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize city manager to pursue the available CDBG funds.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. So we have a motion from councilman Bonner. We have a second from councilman Perry. We'll give it, give him to that one. So all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Dan, if we could just, if you could just keep us up to date on what happens with that and what we end up using the money for if we do get it. All right, agenda item number seven. This is consideration of possible action to approve the reappointment of James McLean, Amanda Hoffpower, and Jacob Dubois to the Animal Advisory Board, along with the appointment of our one and only Chad Dumont to fill the board's vacant seat. Tammy?
So this board is for the Animal Advisory Board. It requires that we have a vet. So that's Amanda Hoffpower. Jacob Dubois is our animal, no. Okay, so they have to, one of the qualifications is they have to be part of a rescue. So Jacob fills that. And then James McLean, Captain McLean, is kind of the overseer of this committee. And then we had one vacant position when Jessica left, and Chad has volunteered for that one. This board meets three times a year and goes over just a report on the animal control situation in the sense of how we're housing them, the report, any needs that they need. They are not a decision-making board, they are an advisory board. So they do not make decisions in regards to animal control itself.
Because I believe, Tammy, specifically as it relates to the animal shelter, so it's the sheltering aspect of it specifically. Okay, okay. Chad, do you know what you're getting into? It's a big responsibility.
Sir, we've had fur babies for over 20 years. It's not an issue.
Awesome. All right, council, I'll make a motion to reappoint Captain James McLean, Amanda Hoffpower, Jacob Dubois, and to appoint Chad Dumont. Do I have a second? We have a second from councilman Lanz. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Congratulations, Captain. Congratulations, Chad. Wear this with pride. Wear this with pride. All right, agenda item number eight. Consideration of possible action to approve the appointment of Aaron Bell, Martin Vela, Mark Polly, and David Hedley to the Buildings and Standards Commission. Tammy?
So this one is our Building and Standards Board. All of the applicants that are being recommended for reappointment, aside from place number five, were original board members from the date of the board being started back in 2013. So when the council appointed these members, they were looking at people in the community or people that had skillsets that, whether it was code enforcement, fire marshal, construction. This board has a lot of power in the sense of they can vote on dilapidated buildings to be taken down and putting liens on properties to recoup the city's dollars. At that time, Aaron Bell worked for the city. He had just gone to, or had just left for the city of Pasadena. So we have Aaron Bell. He is a chief of police, previous code enforcement fire marshal for the city. Martin Vela, Brazoria County Fire Marshal. Mark Polly is a business construction owner in the city. He has a swimming pool company. And then David Hedley is an engineer that lives in Sedona. We do have one vacant position. Place four had moved outside the city and too far to stay on the board. So we will be trying to find somebody for that seat. But for the rest, we request that you reappoint them.
Thank you, Tammy. And council, if you know of anybody that, that might fit the requirements, the specific requirements, please get them connected with, with Tammy and we'll, we'll bring it forward at a future meeting. Any comments or questions from council, or do I have a motion? We have a motion from councilman Oplager. Do I have a second? We have a second from councilman Lanz. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you, everyone. And then move on to agenda item number nine. Tammy, this one's for you as well. Consideration of possible action to approve the reappointment of Paul Safka, Ellen Nageli, Leslie Calvert, and Brian Wilmer to the Croy Park Task Force, along with the appointment of Larry Akery to fill the board's vacant seat. Tammy?
So this is your Croy Park Task Force. The group that you've got for the current board have all worked very well together, and the project's not complete. So the recommendation would be that we reappoint those same members. Listen, he had no longer had the time to commit to the board. So council, past council member Akery has stepped up to the plate and was willing to be considered for that vacant position. So the recommendation would be to reappoint place one through four and then appoint Larry Akery to place five.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Any comments or questions from council? What do we think about this, Mr. Larry Akery fellow? I don't, I don't know.
I think that would be great.
All right. Well, can I get a motion from you, councilman Hudson?
Yes, I'd like to pass the ordinance, I mean, for the board. Larry Akery.
All right. So we got a motion to reappoint the four individuals, as well as appoint Larry Akery. Do I have a second? We have a second from councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. You couldn't, you couldn't get rid of us yet, Larry. You couldn't get rid of us yet. All right. Rosie, we'll be sending this one over to you. Consideration of possible action to direct staff on a homestead exemption.
I contacted the county and I got the state breakdown.
I contacted the county and I got the state breakdown between the, what they consider residential homes and what they were, any other kind of homes. And I was able to get the count that they have. For the whole city, it's 5,102 homes that are currently under the residential.
What was that number again, Rosie?
So if we went with a 2.5% on the, on the homestead deduction, it would be a savings of $46.66 per household and a loss of revenue for the city of $238,073. If we went with a 5%, it would be 93.33 cents per household and a revenue loss of $476,147. With a 10%, it's 186.65 per household with a savings, I mean, with a revenue loss of $952,294 for the city. It's up to you to recommend what amount you want us to go with. I can tell you that if we went with a 5%, that would not even cover the increase of sales tax that we've had this year. Because currently this year, I'm estimating that we'll have $600,000 more in sales tax than we did last year. But almost half of that goes back to some kind of development agreement.
Do you have projected, because I know we had asked about this at the last meeting, projected revenue in property taxes from new value and existing value?
Not quite yet. I'm still working on those numbers.
Okay. This, the 5,102 roof count, is that homesteaded roof counts, or is that just total roof counts?
Homesteaded rooftops.
Okay. And that doesn't include homes in Pomona or Sedona Lakes, because those are outside city limits?
I just went by what the county provided.
So it's still tough to make a decision without knowing what our projected revenue is going to be. I mean, that's great that we're going to have an increase in 300,000 just from, just from sales tax. That's phenomenal. And that, and that's based off of just what it sits today. That doesn't take into consideration when Whataburger is going to open, or some of the others. It's as it sits today, just from that. Okay. Do you know, Rosie, when you, you might expect to have very initial projections for overall revenue increase?
I'm working on those right now, as a matter of fact. So hopefully by the next meeting, I can give you the projected values, the revenues.
Okay. Because, Council, like I said at the last meeting, I think we need to, we need to do something. And there's a lot of value in doing, in doing something, just to, you know, be transparent with you guys. Starting this month, my mortgage just went up by $141 a month. That's, like I've said, that's unsustainable. Now thankfully, last year I got a raise in my job that we're able to offset, but unfortunately, with the economy, the cost of groceries, and now this, that eats into the money that we had, that we were able to put towards savings, or paying down debt, or paying down medical bills. There's a lot of people out there that don't have the ability to increase their revenue that are retired, that live on a tight income every single month, that it's difficult. And I think there's an opportunity, whether we, I'm not saying we do the full 10%, but maybe there's a phased approach every, every two, three years, we could look to increase it. But there's an opportunity for us to do, do something, instead of just asking our current taxpayers to continue to carry the burden of growth. We've asked that of them for the past five years, and I'm under the opinion, I would love to see us do 5% is what my initial thought is. But I need to understand what the revenue projections are and what we would then have left based off of doing something like this. But I'm still under the opinion that something needs to be, needs to be done, because we're at a breaking point. State's not doing anything. State continues to talk about relief, not reform. Other entities, you know, they have their own challenges. We have our own challenges. We have needs as a city, I certainly understand that. But at some point, when is enough going to be enough? And it's a, it's a balancing act, which is why I think a phased approach might be a reasonable approach. Allows you to increase it, let's say 5%. You take a two-year break, then you increase it another 5%. Allows the city to recoup funding because of this. But that's my thoughts. Want to open it up, Council? What are your initial thoughts based off of this? I know we're still going to need those revenue projections. Let's go, Councilman Perry had his mic muted, then we'll go, Councilman Bonner, then we'll go to Dan.
Well, I definitely agree, we need to do something. I really, really would love to see those projections though, because it would give us a more solid idea of we may be able to go above that 5%. You know, maybe we can't do the 10%, but maybe we could do six or seven or whatever, once we know what those numbers are. And that would provide the most assistance to our citizens.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bonner?
So the 5,100 or so rooftops, that's as of like last month, this month, January the 1st. So how many current new home permits are on the books right now?
No, I was just looking through our monthly report today that Brooke sent out. Was it 600 new homes?
So I mean, this number could be 6,100 by the time July rolls around, and we're trying to look at these.
They base it on the January 1st numbers.
Okay, so it won't increase?
Mm-mm.
Not until next year.
Until next year's tax roll.
Next year's budget, okay. Good question, Councilman. Let's go, Manager Dan, and then we'll go, Councilman Lanz.
Sure, I was just going to make the recommendation that, or offer the recommendation, Mayor. If you wanted to give staff direction to go ahead and move forward with preparing the ordinance, say at, for instance, at 5%, it's, it's got to be read twice, and we need to have the first reading on the next meeting, according to our calendar. So then that would give you an opportunity, it would give Rosie some time as well. The second reading would be on June 17th, is that right? Yeah. And if, if anything, you know, if you decided, oh gosh, now that we've seen this, forget it, we don't want to do it, you could just die on the vine at that second reading. But, but we need to, we need to keep the momentum going so that we don't miss this opportunity for this year, if you want to do that.
And on that note, I know I'm working with our directors and department heads to get a preliminary budget number, and that's if we remain the same in staffing and not plan any capital projects other than what's already in-house. So I could probably present that to you guys, so you can make a more informed decision in the next council meeting.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be great, Rosie. I think, you know, the position that I know I want to find myself in is, I want to make sure we support our employees and get them the resources that they need. We need staffing, also understanding the needs of the, the community as, as well. And it's, this is one of the challenges that you have with, with growth. You have taxes that go up, but there's also needs that the community has, and you want to make sure to find that equilibrium between it all. Councilman Lanz?
Yes, that kind of ties into with the direction I was heading, is I agree that any kind of relief would be welcomed. However, I would like to see a little more time, definite some hard numbers, as we know is coming, but right now it's just some assumable projections. And it was just a few council meetings ago, we talked about the overs that we've, we've spent, the 1.4, that, that kind of got my attention. So I, I just, I personally, I just feel that, and our upcoming budget, we don't know what that's going to look like from all our different departments. So I think if we just hold off on this a little bit, at least till the budgets come in, we know what we're looking at for next year, maybe get some harder numbers on, on our growth, sales tax-wise. It's definitely something we need to do. It's just when is the proper, proper time to go ahead and move with this?
Thank you, Councilman. And Dan, I think going back to your, your comments was, we need to, because if we're going to do a homestead exemption, it has to be adopted by a specific date. And when is, when is that date that it has to be adopted by?
July the 1st.
July the 1st. So the goal would be to, if we want to still consider this, Councilman, is to continue seeing this move forward. But June 17th is when the decision would be made, is yes, we need something, we want something, let's do it at this, or no, we, we don't. And Staff, do you feel confident that you'll be able to give us numbers by that point to make an educated decision?
I'm very close to getting preliminaries done already.
Okay. Councilman Oplager?
So this is for everybody? Yes? Every homeowner?
It has a homestead.
Yeah, if you, right? So even if you're over 65, that would just be added on to your...
That is correct. That's what I got from the county today.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I think, Councilman, right, and Rosie, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, if you're over 65, you do have something that's in place already. It's those that are under 65, don't have anything right now. Okay.
Over 65 would just be added on.
Correct. It doesn't replace, it's added on top of.
As long as we don't leave out those folks.
Oh, the over 60...
Yeah. No, leave that out.
Yeah, I have a question.
Councilwoman Sarmanta, or Mayor Protem Sarmanta?
I'll answer to both. Manager Dan and Rosie, what, I can just imagine the conversations as you guys are going through these numbers, like, oh, budget's coming, oh my God, we're losing this much money. I can imagine you like, we're losing $952,000. So my question is, what solutions or what ideas did you have as an expert at this to say, okay, what if we did decide to go 10%? And we put the burden and said, now go figure out where we can come up with $952,294? What are some ideas that you guys have as experts in your field?
That's a good question.
Where the gaps would be filled from?
Yeah.
Honestly, you would cut down on any capital projects, any street improvements, personnel might have to be laid off.
So, so, because it's close to a million dollars.
Exactly.
Just as the numbers are, that's not counting if this, after the TERS gets the reimbursement of the $600,000 in, in sales tax, we're looking at 300,000, that's just as it is. Even if the city grew by 10%, which is a far-fetched, and, and the rooftops, which would be, hmm, 51, yeah, about five, maybe like 500 rooftops. That's still not enough to tip the scale on what we would bring, be bringing in, especially since we have to split the TERS.
As, as long as we're so heavy on rooftops and so low on sales tax, the rooftops take the burden.
Okay, so...
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. Now, we do have commercial that's coming in, like you said, Whataburger. Okay, Whataburger's not enough to compensate for massive HEBs, 5,000 transactions a day.
No.
They're estimated, right? So what are some of those options? Or if, if we tasked you with saying, come up with an idea, we're dropping it, we're going to take care of our owners, we still have to move forward, how creative could you get without laying people off? I'm sure we could penny pinch some of these five, those, what was it, 50-something million-dollar projects and find some pennies in there.
Well, some of these projects, you've got to remember, the money's been allocated to them, so we cannot use it on the general...
No, of course.
Maintenance of it. Where we can penny pinch is, for example, try to lower the cost on the employee benefits so that we don't pay so much for our insurance. So we don't pay so much for the insurance more than anything else. That's one place where we could penny pinch. We've gone as far as in other cities to turn off the lights when we walk out the room, especially on the older buildings that the lights stay on. I know Wally's working right now, switching out the regular lighting to...
Retrofitting our lights.
So that'll cut down some of our light bills. That kind of stuff is where you can do some penny pinching.
But would it amount to $952,000?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay, well, if we went 5%, like the mayor said, could we get creative and find $476,000? That way, we don't sacrifice the cities moving forward, but also offer some relief to our citizens.
I think so. If we went like that, I think so, especially we could get lower insurance costs.
Well, we know that's probably not going to happen, but we can probably try to shop it around. So I would like to see that. I would like to see some creativity and some effort, because I know you guys are doing it. You have to figure it out and present to us. So I know these conversations are happening. I would just like to see if, if we did this and we said, figure it out, we know you probably could. I trust that you could. Do you think...
Just the same way I do at home. I'll rob Paul to pay Peter type of thing. But no, there is ways to become more creative and to try to save money. It's just going to be hard to find those wares.
I, I trust that with a little bit of effort, I'm pretty sure we could, and maybe not the full 400,000, but it's, I'm sure there would, and also weighing out, like what the mayor said and council member said, we have some growth coming, and hopefully the certificate of occupancies on the sale side will start to slowly fill in. I don't know what that forecast looks like, maybe that's something we could look, look at. Do you, do you, are you able to, to project and forecast those numbers when you're looking at the budgets of what's coming and what's potentially?
I can get the list of the businesses and compare them to other businesses that we currently have, like, for example, I could compare Whataburger to McDonald's.
Exactly. Whataburger probably is going to sell more.
Just from Larry alone.
Larry's spending his retirement check over there, huh?
I don't remember.
But I can do that kind of stuff with some of that.
I mean, it's like Mayor said, we have experts here, right? And so I know it's a little bit of work and effort, but I trust that we probably do that.
I can, I think the 5% is doable.
Okay.
I don't know about the 10%. I guess we would have to tie in strings here and there.
5% this year, 7% next year, or something like that, like Mayor said?
Or when the, or maybe skip a year so that I can get a...
Have time to get caught up and not be in the rears?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because Mayor Protem, as I look at it, I look at this proposal that our city manager submitted to us August 1st of last year. It had $635,765 in one-time supplementals. And then we made additional increases to that to include right about a million dollars in this current budget in one-time supplementals. So if the city's revenue stays exactly the same, we don't add any new revenue, that's about a million dollars that can now be reoccurring expenses that we could potentially pull from. You then add, you know, additional homes have been built into the TERS, that we have the TERS clawback, you have additional homes that have added to the tax roll, you have $300,000 in an increase in sales tax. I, I think there's opportunities that, that are there. But the key, I think, is, Rosie, really getting from you and Dan and understanding what are the impacts, what are the pros and the cons? You know, we have the commitment of the yearly payments now relating to the water reclaimance, water reclamation facility and the streets, and so we need to understand what money is committed to that. So I think over the next two meetings, looking at those numbers to seeing what we can do and, and what's a practical way to, you know, just speaking from my personal experience, not overburden families like mine. If taxes stay the same, which we're protesting them, I'm going to be paying $1,000 more a year in property taxes for my property. Plus, you tack on the $1,600 a year that I'm paying in mortgage, then you have the insurance costs that are increasing because of that. You just had water and utility rates that just increased because of that. You have electricity rates that are increasing because of that. It's, there's no longer a middle class in America. You're either upper class or you're a lower class. What can we do? And I think that's really where, where I'm at, is, you know, let's take a look at it and let's have an honest conversation as a council in front of our community about what we, what we can do, if, if anything. But this is a really good question, Mayor Protem, that you asked about taking a look at those things. Councilman Lanz?
Another odd, odd way of looking at it, so we know at 65, we get a, we get a nice exemption from the county. Was it 90, 100,000?
You get 100,000 for the county.
So we're, we're trying to, what really, what we'd love to see is, you know, equal the playing field a little bit. People that's under 65, they get some kind of exemption. What if we, what if we put a 65 cap? What if we said, okay, for those under 65, you get this exemption. When you hit 65, you get the county's exemption. That would lessen our outgo. I mean, sort of odd way of looking at it, but...
The over 65 is not a county exemption, it's one of...
I'm sorry?
The over 65 is not a county exemption, it's a city exemption.
Oh, the, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But there's a county, there's a...
Well, so right now on your, your county, the amount of taxes that you pay to the county, you have $100,000 homestead exemption when you turn over 65. For the city's portion of your tax bill, it's 90,000 once you reach over 65. So I think what you're proposing, Councilman, is for the City of Manville portion on your So I think what you're proposing, Councilman, is for the city of Manville portion on your tax bill, if you're under sixty-five, it's a percentage until you get to sixty-five, and then when you reach sixty-five, you're saying swap it where you no longer get that percentage and then you get the flat ninety thousand? Is that what you're proposing? Is that something that would even be doable by state law?
That's something that the county would have to answer.
Okay.
I can contact the appraisal office tomorrow.
Because I don't know if we can put stipulations on who would get the percentage, yeah? I mean, it's an interesting, interesting thought to look at.
Sixty-five and up, so, I mean, just thought, I could retract that.
I don't know, it's something that, it's, it's, I'm, I'm curious now, because I know that the exemptions are allowed by the state. The state dictates which exemptions and the parameters on the exemptions, and then it's up to counties and cities to choose whether or not they want to make that available to the public. And so I don't know if you could put any stipulations regarding just a flat homestead exemption, but something to look at. Councilman Perry?
Just the last thought. So, so I know we don't have any crystal balls to determine what the future is actually gonna be in. Of course, we can't change any of the development deals that we currently have, but, you know, even in implementing this, or, or we're gonna need to be mindful of how much we offer in future development deals, because it's also gonna be impacted. We gotta, so we don't have hemorrhaging of our money, like we, anyway, future deals need to be better.
Thank you, Councilman. So counsel, what I'll, what I'll do just to keep this, this process moving, so while we get more firm numbers from, from Rosie, we make sure that this train keeps moving down the track with the opportunity, of course, to pull the brake if we need to. But I'll recommend, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to put together an ordinance for a homestead exemption at five percent. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Councilman Hudson. All those in favor? What was that? Okay. Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. And then Rosie and Dan, either at our next meeting or, at their next meeting, we'll have an ordinance on the agenda, and then by the seventeenth will be the, the final go or no-go regarding it. Okay, awesome. Well, thank you, counsel, for that discussion. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Eleven. This is consideration of possible action to direct staff on requirements for roofing inspections. This was requested by Councilmember Oplager and Councilmember Lance. I'll turn it over to Councilman Oplager, and then we also, I believe, have Scott that's here to be able to speak on it as well from SafeBuild. Councilman?
Okay, so to frame this up for everybody, a few weeks ago or a month or so ago, my neighbor was having a roof put on, code enforcement came by, said you have to have a permit and windstorm inspection. Okay, what dog does a city have in windstorms, number one, my number one question? Then number two, what, what value does the city, does a homeowner get out of the fifty dollars for, for an inspection for a roof? Because this is a one-for-one swap, right? In, in my mind, this is where you're taking an old roof shingles off, putting new shingles on. In most cases, this is done within a day, day and a half tops, right? So, so if code enforcement happens to drive by and sees it, right, they, so then somebody has to dash over to the city, because I don't know how many roofing permits have been pulled, right? I really don't, right? And then so, uh, so, but the homeowners have to dash over there, get a permit, come back. And then when they, and then the, the people I'm talking about, they got the windstorm inspection, they said, I got the inspection, who do I give it to? Nobody knows. So the, my question is, and then when you look at the Code of Ordinances, there's no guidelines that I could find on roof, on re-roofing, right? And then if you look at the permit fees or the fee schedule, fifty dollars for construction. It could be anything, right? So I'm just looking for, A, is, 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 is a re-roofing, is that really needed? Are we really nickeling down the homeowner for fifty bucks? Hey, come on up here, you know, because I just don't, I don't see the value of the inspection. So help us, help me understand what, what we're buying for fifty dollars.
So ultimately, cities decide what requires a permit, what does not require a permit through the amendment process of the construction codes. So currently, under the 2021 International Residential Code, there's a section that says exempt from permit. Under that, re-roofs are not exempt from permit. Any repairs, alterations to a building require permit. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all this requires permit. So the city is ultimately in charge of what does and what doesn't require permit. For the value of your permit, most cities require their contractors to be registered. As a part of that registration process, you're verifying, verifying that your contractor meets certain criteria for insurance coverage. So if they can have workers comp, they could have, if they tear something up at, at your house, then the contractor has insurance to repair that. Normally, that's not a big deal. Where that becomes extremely important is after a storm, where the state does not regulate general contractors at any level. There's no licensing requirements. Anybody can go slap a sign on their truck, become a, a general contractor, and then come put a roof on your house. And they hit in droves after a storm. A lot of cities use that permit process to make sure that that person that's doing work at least meets the minimum requirements for insurance. So one, you've got minimum requirements for insurance. A lot of cities here on the coast, where we are in TDI country, Texas Department of Insurance, who's, who provides insurance on, on, on your roof, what they'll do is, they will require a WPI eight form from the contractor. The city doesn't do anything with it, there is no benefit to it, but what it does is it creates a layer of protection for the citizen, so that the citizen can get insurance coverage on the roof. So if the roof is not, if the contractor comes in here, rips a roof off, puts a new roof on, doesn't call TDI, doesn't get a WPI two from the, from the engineer, then the TD, state inspector, and send that up to the state to get a WPI eight form, which means you have, now have a cover, a coverable roof, then the citizen won't have coverage and won't know they don't have coverage unless the citizen understands TDI. So what'll happen is, is a city will come in and require that fifty-dollar roofing permit to go in and say, hey, we know that you're, we know that you're going to, we know that you have minimum insurance coverage. We're gonna make sure that you're at least getting this inspected by the state so that the homeowner can have windstorm coverage for their home, the ability to get windstorm coverage. That's what we see a lot of here on, on the coast and our, our cities that are in TDI counties.
The, the windstorm, if you don't do that, you just got, you pay for the waiver, right? You just have a windstorm waiver.
That, that is, that is, you can, yes.
Right, so if that, if you.
And again, I'm not arguing for it, yes, Councilman. It is your decision. I'm just telling you why cities do what they do.
Right, so out of that, contractors that are registered, how many contractors are registered here in the city for re-roofing? Because I, I'm telling you, I watched it happen today. You know, they, they ripped that roof off and were done in a day.
That, that is correct.
Right.
Not everybody who puts on a roof comes and gets a permit.
Right, so I'm just kind of wondering, you know, is that really something that we want to continue, at least at fifty dollars? Right? Because, so in, in this property in question, it was a month later that they said it was closed, right? So, so one month went by, what happened? And then how, what was the inspection that occurred? Or was there an inspection?
So as far as the city inspection that occurs, in a TDI county, it's very little. We go by, we make sure that the vents are sticking through the roof. We know that they've got furnace or water heater or plumbing vents that are sticking through the roof. That, in a TDI county, like I said earlier, the purpose, the reason most cities require a re-roofing permit is for the simple fact that they want to verify that they're, that the roof is being done and it's getting inspected by the WPI eight.
Right, yeah, so.
Okay, by the state.
Why, by a windstorm inspector or.
Correct, and they're, and they're just, they're, they're providing that as an extra layer for the, for their citizens.
But the city doesn't call anybody or.
No.
So it could be twenty-five dollars, it could be twenty dollars, it could be whatever, right? I mean, it, it, the fees vary.
It could be zero. You could issue free permits if you wanted to.
By the municipality, that's.
Correct. You, you, you control the cost of that permit.
Right. So Rosie, we don't know how many, do we know how many roofing permits have been pulled? And so, no idea.
No, no, not off the top of her, I mean, that would have to be.
So, so we'll just have, in, in, so in the code, there's no, but it just, if you look, again, if you, if you look at it, you go, I didn't know I needed it. Right? Because like me, I, the first thing, I looked out, I saw him, I said, well, let me go to the Code of Ordinances. I don't see anything that says anything about a, a roof, re-roofing permit. You find it for a water well, you find it for a fence, but you don't find it for a roof. And I'm thinking, okay, so what's our gap? What's the process?
The reason, so to explain that, why you find water wells and fences and stuff like that in your ordinance is because those are things that are not covered under the building code, okay? Fence is under seven foot exempt from permit in the building code. So if you want to enforce some type of fence regulations, you have to put it into your ordinance. So you're probably not gonna find in your ordinance where it says you need a permit to change out a water heater, right? That the cities don't go through and, and through ordinance, write out what does and does not require permit. They adopt the codes, and then the codes tell you what does and does not require permit, and then they amend the codes to fit their needs, the specific.
You're saying, so the, what, the Universal Building Code?
International Building Code. For homes, it'd be International Residential Code.
You have to have a re-roofing permit.
It, it has, it, it is very broad language. New construction, repair, remodel, alteration, are, are, all require permit. And then it comes through, and there's a section that's exempt from permit. And I have seen cities who expand and blow that list out, and to all kind of things are exempt from permit. I've seen cities where they really start taking items off, where we, we want to, and if you have green space requirements, so much of your lot is required to be green space, those cities will go in and, and take out the permit exemption for flat work. The, in, in, in the building code, there's not a permit required if you want to pour a driveway. But if you have a green space requirement and so much of your, of your yard, of your lot, has to be green space, then cities will pull that out because they want to regulate how much concrete you pour to make sure that you're within those limitations. So it's, that, that's how the, the permit system works, requirements for permit.
Okay. Mayor, go ahead, it's, you know.
Yeah, I, I've, just a few, few questions here. So you mentioned at the beginning, the 2021 codes do not have re-roofing as an exemption. What do the 2024 codes state? Same thing, or is?
As far as I know, they're the same thing. We haven't gotten a lot into the 2024 codes.
Okay. Are there any cities around us that do not require a re-roofing permit?
You, you're, once you get into those cities, you're talking, I guess, in this area, you're, you know, cities like Danbury, Ridgewood, real small communities are really, the smaller the community, the more lax they are on what does require permit, what doesn't require permit. Once, once you start getting into a little bit larger city, up into the ten thousand population range, just about everybody requires a re-roofing permit.
Okay. Manager Dan, a question for you. What is our cost that's associated with issuing a re-roofing permit?
The fifty-dollar permit right now?
What is, what's our cost? Does that cover our costs? Is that more than our cost with bringing in revenue? What's our cost?
That was something I had asked y'all to look in. Do you know exactly, is it just a pass-through?
So I believe what, as far as, as what we're charging you is somewhere around the twenty-four, twenty-five dollars for the inspection is what SafeBuild charges the city, plus whatever additional fees for processing, covering the city staff for permit tax and supervisors.
And Manager Dan, what's, what's your opinion on all of this? And then I want to get Councilman Lance's opinion as well, as he seconded the motion.
I think it's, you know, personally, I think it's, it's a good, it's, it's another good benefit for our citizens that because there are so many contractors that, you know, say that they know what they're doing, and then they, they show up and then they're gone. I've just, I've seen it so many times. We're not gonna catch them all, to your point, but I mean, code enforcement is obviously involved. I mean, they caught the one and just happened to do a spot check and, hey, where's your permit? Oh, I didn't know I needed a permit. Well, good, go get one. And then, so that, that worked out. I mean, if, you know, I, I say flippantly, fifty dollars isn't, isn't a lot of money in the overall scheme of things. If, if it, if it encouraged that contractor to, to be above board and everything, I think it's worth it. Sounds like it's not costing us, we're not making money off of these, obviously, but it sounds like it's at least paying for itself. This is the first one that I've, you know, heard, heard a complaint about, but there, there could be others.
Councilman Lance?
Well, I do see the benefit of it, and of course, we have to pay someone to do the, do the inspection because we're not doing all the inspections ourselves. What kind of rubs me the wrong way is, what if a homeowner is replacing his own roof? He doesn't have a contractor, you know, he's, he's putting his own roof in, he's responsible for his work. That's where I don't understand why he would be required to have the windstorm inspection on his own house. I mean, if he puts a roof in and it blows away, it's his fault, but how do you divide that between, okay, contractors need a, need a, a permit, homeowners putting their own roof on, don't. I don't, you know, that's, I don't know how you even try to manage that. So it's, it, it does have its benefits.
David, I've been through this myself personally, and I know the closer you get to the coast, the more important this is. But I think what happens is if you do a roof without getting a permit, without getting the windstorm inspection, and your roof does blow away, and your insurance company goes out there and says, oh, wait, wait a minute, they have a new roof that you put on, you never got this inspected, or got the engineering, or got the certificate, we're gonna deny your claim for your roof. So if you're not going to have any insurance, I guess you're on your own, you're, like you said, you're okay. But if you do it yourself, you don't get the inspection, the windstorm, it can have an impact on your ability. Of course, you know, Twea is famous for not wanting to pay a lot of claims anyway. But that's one thing that they'll say is like, you know, and not only that, but it also for sometimes windows and your siding. I ran into it with the siding problem, where if you don't use a TDI-approved product and you don't get the inspection, then they can basically, you know, deny a claim based on that, is what they told me. So that, that does have some, some utility for getting that windstorm inspection is the key. Not so much the city inspection, but like the gentleman said, if the city inspection makes sure that that windstorm inspection gets done and that people have that windstorm insurance, it's gonna help them.
All right, Councilman Bonner?
Yeah, I'll, one of the things I like about the permitting process is if, if my neighbor puts a roof on, if he doesn't get it inspected, and then his roof blows off and hits my house, my house isn't gonna get paid for either. So that kind of protects other people, just, not just the homeowner. What's the penalty for not getting a permit if you're?
The first thing that happens with, with any, any work, I mean, we can, we can double fee them for not getting a permit. That's the first step. And then if they just refuse, you know, then you can go to, go to court with them and, you know, up to two thousand dollars a day.
Is that fee high enough, is what I'm getting at? I mean, if, if all it is gonna be a hundred dollars to a roofer that's making thirteen thousand dollars repairing your roof, he may not care about a hundred bucks. You know, if it was a thousand-dollar fee, he might care a little bit and get a permit. So I mean, we, I think we come across that in other things, too, dumping animals and everything else in the world. You know, if our fees were a little higher for not obeying what we needed to do, then maybe people would do them.
Mayor Protem?
Okay, couple questions here. So if a homeowner decided to fix their own roof, couldn't they just go ahead outside of, and get their own windstorm inspection so that their insurance covers it? Because what if he is a homeowner and he says, I'm qualified to do this, I just don't have all the requirements the city says that I need to have to put this on? Yes or no?
Yes, you can hire your own engineer.
Of course, okay. So in that case, if, if Mr. Lance wanted to fix his. So in that case, if, if Mr. Lance wanted to fix his own roof, or fix his own house, huh? Well, if you did, since you brought that up, could he potentially come to the city, apply for his own permit, and sign a waiver saying, I'm doing this myself, but I will have the windstorm inspection on my work, and then provide that to the city so that we at least have that protection there? Yeah, your name? Maybe? Yes? It's a good question.
Yes, you can.
Okay. Second question. Do we know what the requirements are for someone to come and get that permit? Because I had a cluster of a situation when we were doing some stuff at my house years ago, and the lovely lady that I dealt with was so nice and guided me in the right direction, but I had to, I had to go through the city's list of approved vendors, and not the person that I wanted, that I trusted to do the work. So what are, do we know what that is? Like, what are the requirements for them to be approved through the city to then provide work on my home?
Usually, it's just a matter of getting registered with the city.
Right, there's not an approval process. The cities don't have, you have to meet X amount of criteria. The only item that you have to meet is, sometimes city will say you have to have a minimum of $300,000 worth of liability insurance.
Liability insurance, and you don't have to have like a formal LLC, or some type of EIN number to prove that you're in business?
I'm not, I'm not aware.
Okay, no.
Because a lot of your contractors don't have.
Don't have that.
They're self-employed.
Right, they're just DBA.
Exactly. So we don't have that limitation, is what I'm asking?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So any business owner can come and say, hey, I want to register as a vendor with the city. Okay, what do I pay? There's a fee for that, and then I just have to prove that I have liability insurance.
I mean, I guess with the exception of some of the trades, like electricians, you know, you have to be a master electrician, and here's your information.
For licensing purposes, plumbers, electricians, mechanical contractors are required to have a master's license. Electricians are required to also have a contractor's license, and that is state, that, those are state requirements.
Those are state, okay.
Not city requirements. So the city would say, hey, you want to be a plumber here in the city and do some plumbing work, I need to see a copy of your master plumber's license, and a copy of your, your liability insurance.
I like that.
Or actually, we can look those up online at, with the state plumbing board.
What if my husband wanted to replace some plumbing in our home? He couldn't do that?
Let's make sure we stay on roofing specifically.
Well, let's stay on roofing, but really, it goes into the topic of who can provide what contract work to your home, and then the other thing that comes to mind, because this did happen to one of my neighbors who hired an approved vendor, and they disappeared overnight anyway, and took half the money upfront, and then did three days' worth of work and disappeared, and they were out of their pocket like $15,000 or something. And so I know that these things are there, but at the end of the day, anybody can file for bankruptcy and disappear, and that's, that's something that scares me, more so than, hey, you know, it's up to me if I want to have windstorm insurance or flood insurance on my home. And that's kind of what Councilman was saying.
Yeah, right. So, finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay, so, so, all I'm saying, so in the process, right, you referenced that there's the building code, is there any way that could be listed somewhere that says that this is, because all I'm saying is, when you look, if you look, if a homeowner looks, there's nothing in there that says you got to have it.
Sure.
Right?
Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying. So you could look, you, I've looked, I sat there and drilled, and drilled, and drilled. There's nothing that's clear that says you got to have it. Just says, the $50 fee, or the construction, construction fee starts at $50. That's pretty wide open, right? So all I'm saying is, if there's a requirement somewhere in the, in the universal building code says re-roofing is required, permit is required, is, is there any way that could just have a section that says, this is what you got to have?
If you let Brooke and Jorge and I kind of brainstorm on the best spot for that, but yeah, I think we could put something on the website for that.
You know, because that, that would have answered a lot of questions. Because I sat back, I looked, I said, well, let me look. I don't see it, right? And then they, then they said, well, what about this? I don't know. Right? So if, at least if the information's there, said, this is why, here's the why, the universal building code says you have to have it.
The process guy did some processing, and the process didn't pan out?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. So Councilman Oplager and Councilman Lance, is there anything that you guys want to, besides that, provide direction to staff on?
If he could add something into, to this section where it says a roofing permit is required because, somewhere in, in our code of ordinance, somewhere that says, here, and here's the requirements, you know, because again, if these, if these contractors, especially because a lot of, ABC Roof sells a roof, but they're going to sub it out, that subcontractor probably doesn't know permits required, or whatever, or.
I would, I would disagree with that. Roofing, re-roofing permits are not unique to Manville. I've, I have personally worked in, in four other cities, and we required re-roofing permits in every city. I'm currently involved with about 35 municipalities right now.
Subcontractors know to go pull a permit.
If they're doing roof, if it's, if the roofing contractor, if ABC Roof comes to your house, especially in your major roofing, they know that you got to have a permit. And if you look on your bill, and, and I really encourage people to look, and you need to look at your estimates, because a lot of times, they will have a fee in there for a permit, will be a line item fee in that estimate, if you're getting a line item fee, and the biggest complaint we get from homeowners is that they were charged for a permit, and the contractor never went down and got one. So that's, so, so contractors know, homeowners may not know, and homeowners never know what does and doesn't require permit. And so, as, 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 when I was building official, I encouraged everybody, if you don't know, call. We will be more than happy to talk to you, sit down with us, explain your project, the scope of work of your project, we'll be able to tell you if a permit's required, not required, whatever you need to look at, that we can get into, you know, hey, if you're having your siding done, you're, we're in a, we're in a coastal county, you need to have this inspected by the state. We can provide a ton of information to homeowners when the homeowners call in, so we really encourage that. But the contractors are, contractors know. If they're doing this all the time, they know.
So of all the four cities that you've worked, and Manville's the best to work with, right?
Correct. Except, except they need a Whataburger.
They need a Whataburger, that's it. People, and people love, people love the peace and quiet as well, that's for sure. And Dan, one of the things I'll ask to Council, or Mayor Protem Sarmanta's point is, also when we look at putting something on the website, if we can put on there, you know, how people can get registered with the city, kind of making sure that that's visible of what that, of what that looks like. But it does raise a good question, and I'd love to get some feedback at a future meeting to speak to your point, is if I am doing work on my own home, and I am doing the re-roofing, I don't have $350,000 or so of insurance, am I able to do my own work and then pull a permit?
So what we did in, in the cities, and I'm a pro, I'm a, I'm a homestead advocate, okay? We wrote into a lot of the permit requirements into the ordinances for, if you were doing work on your own home, and you had to prove up that you had a, via homestead exemption with the county, okay, it has to be your homestead, state allows for you to do work without a license if you're working on your homestead, you can't work on your rental property, but you can work on your homestead license, and we just extended that out to all, all trades. If you were a homestead owner, and you were working on your homestead, then we did not require the insurance, and to kind of just skip some of that, that was really geared towards the contractors.
I like that.
I like that, and maybe have them sign a waiver that says, hey, I'm taking full responsibility of my own work, if my patio caves on me, and that's me.
Well, we, we have them sign, we have them sign waivers saying, hey, you understand you still have to build it to the codes.
To the codes, exactly.
Right?
Yeah. Well, Dan, if we can, if we can look into that and at a future meeting here, get some information. Go ahead, Chief.
Well, unfortunately, I've been through some similar situations such as this, where I was doing work, and I went, oops, maybe I need to go call the city and see if I need a permit, which I did. I had to pay double fees, I had to hire an engineer, for windstorm engineer, and then I had to hire a windstorm inspector. Luckily, my windstorm engineer didn't charge me anything, but I think $10, but the windstorm inspector was $250. One thing to keep in mind that nobody's said or thought of yet, is yes, you can do your roof yourself, but if you have a mortgage, they're going to require insurance. And if you don't have a windstorm inspection, you're not going to get insurance. So what you have to remember is, when you do all of this stuff, yes, some things you can do by yourself. I give you an example. In Lake Jackson, where I used to work, you could run electrical all day long, you had to have it permitted and inspected, but you couldn't hook it up unless you had a master electrician pulling that permit and hooking it up. City of Angleton, where I live now, I can't even replace a receptacle without a licensed electrician. So every city has different ordinances and different ways of doing things, but the key thing to take away from this is, if you have a mortgage, it's just like having a car. If you take a lien out on a car, you have to have insurance. If you have a mortgage on your house, you have to have insurance. And if you don't have the windstorm certificate on your roof, your front door, your back door, your windows, your garage door, you're not going to get insurance. Just something to keep in mind.
And what that, what that, and I've seen this happen, if you allow homeowners to do work and don't really follow up on the insurance requirements, two things happen. One, their mortgage company could call the loan due in 30 days, and now you have a home that's not sellable, because somebody else cannot get a mortgage on that home because the home's not insurable. And so you start, you got to, again, the reason that a lot of cities, especially down here with the re-roofing permits, although it's super small, right, it's a very important part of your structure, important enough that TDI was requiring an engineer to come out and inspect the installation of those shingles, to make sure they're using nails, not staples, six or eight nails per tab, and not two or three, that they're hand-driven sometimes, and not nail gun-driven. So there's a lot of things that go into that, to regulate that, and again, that, and, and again, you can do whatever you want to do, but the reason that cities here on the coast require that, that, that re-roofing permit is just to make sure those things are getting, those boxes are getting checked for the homeowner.
Okay.
That's good feedback.
Thank you.
Dan and team, when do you think that we could get a follow-up update on this, from a timeline standpoint?
Just as soon as we can. I want to do some research internally, and I'll probably just send out an email to everybody, probably within the next two weeks at the most.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, sir, appreciate you. All right, we next have consideration and possible action to direct staff on the facility use policy. Bobby, Babe, this one's for you.
Hey, well, this is what we presented last council meeting, policy for people that would like to come and rent City Hall, which would be this room, potentially the conference room, and also the rear parking lot. The way that it's drafted now, it's really only limited to other governmental entities that are non-city, not the city, and also not-for-profit and nonprofit organizations. And it doesn't include the Police Department of Public Works, Croy Park, or any of our parks, because that would be covered under a separate policy, as well as the public library, they're part of the Missouri County library system. I guess the, the questions were, you know, the presence of a city employee. Currently, we have in there that, obviously, if you're going to rent it out, somebody's going to have to be here to supervise, you don't necessarily hand the keys to City Hall and let them have a meeting in here without somebody being around. Problem is, what cost or what fee do we charge associated with that? Not only perhaps the rental, but how do you cover after-hours or weekend cost of an employee? Who would that employee be? We don't really have a, usually, traditionally, it's a Parks and Rec Department employee, but we don't really have a Parks and Rec Department yet.
Yet, yet.
Yet. So that was one of the remaining questions, you know, what kind of a charge for staffing in the facility after hours, and what employee fee, you know, what kind of cost would that cover the overtime, or whatever it might be to have an employee here?
And I think, I think Bobby, this is what you guys have highlighted here is on Section 2.2, and counsel, I guess that's on page, page one, just a little ways down. I think you're needing feedback from counsel about what to ultimately draft into that.
Well, if you look in 7.9 and 7.10, I mean, it does require the employee. The key is, again, is just how do you assess the fee or the cost? It might require somebody to do some calling and see what other jurisdictions charge, maybe, and figure out who would, who would that employee be, Tammy? Exactly, you know?
Concert.
If it's a concert, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be willing, I'd be willing. So just some, you know, realistic questions that we, and it looks like we have a pretty decent policy to start it, now we just, the hard part is the devil's in the details, and it's really, I mean, we have an application that's in the back of the, of the policy that could be used if we require security, and then we also have a chief and off-duty police request form, and I don't know who that would get sent to, to you, or which Captain McLean or whoever would have to.
It'd be one of them.
Yeah, exactly. So there's some semantics, but you know, something as simple as, you know, a nonprofit group wanting to use the rear parking lot for a, a car wash, I think it might have been what would start it all. Sounds like a great thing, we just don't have a policy in place to really address it. We don't have a fee if there is a, if there's going to be a fee, maybe that could be waived by the city manager if they're nonprofit, but we still probably need to recover our cost of whatever staff person's going to be there, and we need to recover cost of the water, or something like that, you know, so the city manager may have to, you know, find out which employee, which department gets, gets to, to do this until we have a Parks and Rec. At some point, if it's big enough, might require a special event permit, which we have a policy for that, too, and the chief's been integrally involved with that. It's enough people. You know, if it's just another governmental entity that needs to use this room to have a special meeting, maybe the Janus District wants to have a special call meeting or something, we have a policy for that, they could use that, or, they would be covered under this policy. So it's just a starter thing, there might be more we can add to it, there, you know, might be things that maybe you don't feel comfortable with, maybe the conference room is just too far deep in the bowels of City Hall that we really don't want to make that because it's the security of the other offices that are involved back there, maybe that's something that would be really rare, that somebody would be able to do the conference room. This room or the parking lot seem to be the, the biggest contenders, but it's really here for council's feedback. We've started off on something, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, and if you've involved with any civic organizations or nonprofits, maybe you can give us some feedback.
Mayor Protem?
I just have a couple questions. I was reading through here, and it says you cannot ask for donations, which kind of defeats the purpose, unless I read that wrong.
What, what section is that?
I think that was six. It says, any business firms, okay, city facilities shall not be used for the following, and then down three, it says, any business firms or other for-profit organizations soliciting, selling products, and then you go down, where was it? Accepting donations was on here somewhere. Oh, any meeting or activity that solicits funds or donations, or accepts such from attendees, that's on there also. So if, if we were, like, what are some ideas besides the, like, the car wash, like, what else? Because it says no businesses, so what are we thinking it would be appropriate use?
Well, that's why I was, I was asking for help from council, what other civic organizations or nonprofits, you know, are looking for some space that might be, you know, more visible here than, or if they don't really have an office, or they don't have a place, but they wanted to do some sort of meeting, or, you know, fundraiser. I think the fundraiser's supposed to be meaning for, you know, for-profit businesses, we don't want them coming to really use city property, public property.
Of course.
For free to make money.
Exactly.
That's kind of what really was not designed.
But we already, don't we already have, like, the Coffee and Connections here? Is that kind of what we're thinking about, like, what we do with the chamber, or?
Coffee and Connections, I mean, right now, we're just kind of doing that as an ad hoc thing, I guess, through the city secretary, the city manager.
The scouts.
Yeah, the scouts might, maybe have a troop that wants to have a meeting here a couple times a month.
4H, Manville has a 4H program.
4H, okay.
Lakeland HOA does not have a meeting facility, nor does Terra Estates, and they might want to use this facility, but they are soliciting funds, because they're like, hey, you got to pay your assessments, make sure to pay that, so that would, I mean, I think you could just cut that one from it. But yeah, we had a nonprofit. you could just cut that one from it. But yeah, we had a nonprofit that wanted to do a car wash in the parking lot. You might have somebody, I know somebody was talking about wanting to do a motorcycle show, and they were maybe looking for space like that in the future as well, like a free show. You could have a bunch of motorcycles.
Like a car show?
Yeah, like even a car show as well. I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities that are there. But up until now, when people have reached out, we've always have said no, because we don't have a policy in place. And the challenge has also been, and Tammy can speak to this, you know, staffing. But all of a sudden, if you now attach a monetary compensation to the staffing, that the organization would have to pay, which I 100% agree with that, it's an opportunity for an employee to make a little bit of money on the side for just hanging out here and not doing too much. I like having a registration process, just so we can know who's using the facility, who to contact if there's an emergency. If they're utilizing inside, I'm not a fan of the conference room in the back. I think that's too deep into the belly of the whale. But something in here, I think, would be, Drainage District's a perfect example, or, you know, whatever the situation might be, BCCA. I mean, if we wanted to do BCCA at City Hall, that's not technically an official city meeting, but BCCA is its own separate nonprofit organization. Could they, that would allow them to use this. So that's my opinion. And then I do think there should be a requirement that, you know, if city employees want to sign up, to be on the list of who to call, you know, they can sign up. And then, hey, these people want to use it this day, this time, first come, first served, and you can sign up for it that way. So that's some of my initial thoughts.
Also, it says, over half of the member residency for the groups in the city limits of Manville through membership roster, including names and homes and businesses and addresses. Nonprofit status if applicable, and then community benefit and/or obviously nonprofit. So are we saying that only organizations that are local to Manville can request or apply to utilize the space?
That's how the policy started out. This is for, you know.
Local.
Our taxpayers, it's our public facility, our public institution, you know. And I think, really, other than, originally, it started out, I think, other than the cost of the staff person, it was for free use of the city. And that's why we want to specify, you can't make money off of it. But if it's for the greater good, for, you know, municipal purpose.
A nonprofit that helps local people, maybe?
Correct. And that's why the local requirement is, I mean, and also, we've had, I guess, not for this, but for the park, Croy Park, we had a soccer organization come from out of town, wanted to use Croy Park for free, for our soccer camp, to basically make money for free use of the city, or, you know, our nominal use or fee use of the city park, to make money for themselves. And they were from out of town. Well, that kind of didn't sit well with a lot of people back when that happened. So that was kind of the way, the reason that got in here.
Okay.
Well, the devil's advocate that I would play to that, Bobby, is, while there, you would technically be out of town, the participants in the camp would be local Manville people. So that would be maybe my only thing about, I don't know if I necessarily have an issue. Maybe we just put an and/or at the end of that one, under 7.75, the first bullet point, say, for the organization groups. So that way, there's a preference given to the local groups, but it allows the opportunity for consideration. You know, maybe, you know, let's say this X organization comes in and wants to utilize the City Hall for a meeting, and the meeting is, here's a great example, let's say the VA wants to use City Hall, use these chambers to put on a little bit of a seminar for veterans. Well, the VA is a government organization that's not made up of 51% member residency in Manville, but yet it's going to go serve the community of Manville. You'll have people from Manville that would come out and sit there and get the educational material. So putting that and/or allows for a little bit of review process whenever they register to participate. And then I would have the requirement in there that, you know, it has to be approved by, you know, the city manager or his designee.
Well, 7.7B actually has an or. It says, it's either the group space in Manville, majority of members reside in Manville, or the proposed use is deemed a community benefit, which I think covers the situation you're saying, like the veterans or something like, where everybody's not from Manville, but it's enough of a community benefit that will allow our public property of our taxpayer.
Or like our local schools, or something like that. If they have something they want housed here, I don't know what they would. They have more space than we do.
Schools. And again, it's all based on, you know, space available, got to go through the city manager. If the city needs it, or if it's close to timeline where the city might run over, maybe we might not have it available. This is really just for when it's really not in use, and somebody can make use of it. And for the community benefit, council's going to adopt a policy that will.
And maybe we can find $400,000 in event fees to compensate for.
If we have a festival, maybe, right?
Probably 10%.
Big festival, concert. Well, and it does say 7.75. I didn't read this. I guess, you know, they always say in the Bible, you've got to read the few verses before and after the verse. But the preacher's over here chuckling. But it says applicants may be required to provide the following verification. So that proof of the 51% isn't necessarily required, but it may be required as it's reviewed.
I like it. What would we charge? Let's talk hours, a base fee, cleanup fee?
Because we don't have a Parks and Rec Department, maybe a Parks and Rec Board might be able to do something. We do have a board that's, can be charged with advising the city council, the Parks Board. Do we have that active currently, Tammy, or is it just Croy Park?
We could get Croy Park to look at it, the task force.
That's a good idea.
So we have the Croy Park Task Force, but as for the Parks Board, it was intended to be on tonight's. But out of the seven board members, we only ended up with four confirmed applicants. So we're hoping maybe by the next meeting, we'll have some more applicants to make those appointments.
Just so that that could be a task of, please advise city council as whatever. They may read over the whole policy and think of things we haven't even thought of. But also, you know, how do we do, what kind of cost would we assess for something like that? Maybe that's a charge for them to give us advice on.
So what, I'll do a hairy huh. So tonight, we're just giving directions to staff, and I think the direction, at least that I would like to give council, want to see if you would agree, is I think we do need a registration process. I don't necessarily know if we need a fee that's associated with the registration process. But if there's going to be deemed cleanup, then there could be a potential cost for the cleanup, whatever that would be. For after-hours or weekends, I do think somebody that can represent the city would need to be here. I don't know if we want to make that just a city employee. I don't know if we want to make it elected officials as well, but that could be a consideration. But I do think someone would need to be here, and the cost for their time to be here, if it's a city employee, I would be fine with that. And, you know, Bobby, I like your idea of the Parks and Recreation Board. I still don't know when that's going to necessarily be formed. I don't know how long we want to drag this out.
Remember, the policy that's going to follow this would be the Parks rental policy, and that is even more teeth for them to get involved. And then the facility naming policy would be the third one that would come in that also could get their input.
Correct. But for that, I mean, maybe just look at best practices. Alvin's got a really good Parks and Recreation Department. So does Pearland. Kind of maybe just see what they have there. We pull the best practices and put it into place. I don't know if we're going to have a ton of people that start to use it right off the bat, but I do know that one of the biggest challenges in Manville is a meeting space. People don't have an area to gather to have informational meetings, and this is an opportunity to, you know, pay some employees maybe some more money, as well as provide a phenomenal meeting space. But council, what do you think on that? You know, providing direction and then getting best practices before or after our next meeting?
Let's do it.
Good with that? Councilman Bonner?
I just think we need to think about the cost. Being involved in renting a building every weekend, most of the time twice a month, like I do with the Lions Club, we don't, you won't imagine the things that you don't think about that are going to cost, especially when you start letting people. I'm not so much worried about parking lots outside, but in here, people are going to try and put stuff up on the walls, and you're going to tell them not to, but they're going to. So now you've got a cost of repairs. So I'm not opposed to this. I'm just thinking you're going to have to come up with a certain set of rules for each place that you're talking about doing this. And you're going to have to come up with some security deposits, cleaning fee to clean this room after a four-hour event's about $250. So, you know, if somebody's willing to pay that to come in, we used to not charge that, but now we charge $250 in the contract, and that's strictly for cleaning. And we have a professional person that comes in and cleans it after the weekend's over. So I just think we need to think about the fees involved, so that we make sure we go back and look at the yearly cost for the building on the weekend, and we can measure that, so that we had something to look at. That won't be able to be done until you start doing it, but you just need to think about that. You're going to have to try and take a little bit of, some type of average. What's the air conditioning cost? What's the heating, the lighting, things like that.
That's good feedback, Councilman. And maybe there's a differential between if you're utilizing the parking lot compared to inside the facility. So, Dan and Bobby, do you guys feel like you have, you know, kind of muddy direction forward?
Like it's a sticky burr, like I can't get.
This and the open records request, right? So let's do this. If you guys can kind of take a look at what might be best practices for Pearland and Alvin, and let's have this on our next agenda, just to continue the conversation and keep it moving. I think council's open to it, but we want to make sure we understand the costs and do right by the community. This is the people's house, as they say. I got to chuckle. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Moving on here. Agenda item number 13, consideration and possible action authorizing the city manager to purchase a certain tract of land not to exceed the purchase price directed by city council, and provided there is an existing funding source in the current budget. Dan?
Yes, Mayor, this is what we discussed in the executive session tonight. So what we're looking for is authorization up to $620,000 with an option period of 40, up to 45 days, I believe is what we said. So we're just looking for that motion.
All right.
That direction.
I like it, Dan. And I know, within that option period, we'll have you guys come back forward and kind of present a site plan and what that might look like, working with PIGAL. So I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to initiate the purchase contract for 7246 Masters Road not to exceed $620,000 with an option period of 45 days. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Who's second in it? Councilman Lance seconded it. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-2-0. And just one confirmation, Dan and Rosie, that item, the funding for that is coming from debt that was previously issued by city council in early 2023, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So this is not being pulled from the general fund or from the budget? This was already money that was there?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Mayor and council comments, I believe. Councilman Oplager had a comment?
I do, and I want to thank Manager Gann and everybody who was involved in making these cards. I think coming from a world where, you know, having this at your hand is very good, especially the Stop Work Authority. And I wish, and hopefully, it's going to be posted on our webpage. And I would encourage even our citizens, that when you see, if you see work that's not being done safely, especially city crews, you know, you don't have to jump up and say, stop work there. You can call him, him, and that'll stop it, right? But this, stuff like this can let somebody go home safely at the end of the day. And that's how important it is. It's a culture. You have to believe it. You walk the talk, right? And I'm telling you, when you see it, and you'll know it, you'll say, that's not right. Much like that hole that those guys were in the other night with no barrier, you know, not right. But we could be better.
True, subcontractor.
But that's what this is for.
Subcontractor.
It's still that man. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from council? Just three for me. Dan, when can we expect to have a list of streets that we're going to utilize the $10 million for? When do we expect that to be?
Now that we know what our number is, right? So we've got a, it will not be difficult to come up with $10 million worth of streets and sidewalks. It would be difficult to compete against one another, yeah.
Next meeting, second meeting in June, something like that?
Well, if you're still, you're still planning on, not, yeah, so probably the second meeting in June.
Okay, awesome. One other item. I want to have a discussion at some point within the next few months about making a requirement in all right-of-ways that power lines have to be buried, as we've seen what's happened in Houston recently, and the power outages because electrical lines are not required to be buried. I understand there's a cost associated with it. I'd like for us to just bring key stakeholders together to talk about the feasibility of doing that, because it is a life and safety situation with it. And I think it's an appropriate conversation to have. I also want to give a shout out to our GIS team. They're doing a phenomenal job with our online GIS. I was perusing it today, and I noticed that there's a layer for trash, where, when your trash pickup is. There's also a layer for zip codes. So if you need to know what zip code you're in, or what precinct you're in, there's a lot that's there. So if you go to our city website, there is a GIS section that you can play around with it and learn a lot of useful information, which streets are city streets, county streets, state streets. And I just, I love, I nerd out on it a little bit. I know you as well, Dan. But I appreciate the team for their efforts in getting those GIS layers and keeping them updated. So thank you. With that, Councilman Lance, Councilman Bonner, again, congratulations. Look forward to working with you guys over the next three years. And I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Do we have a second from Councilman Bonner? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.